To the expropriation of land without compensation. Then you stand up and you say: "In this case, we have to work. When the water flows, it will not be. We have to work for this. And this is here, we have to work. And I have to answer what you want." Because if you don't, when your three minutes are over, I'm going to ask you to sit down. And you would not have put your point across. The other point that I want to make is: After this hearing, this team have one more hearing in Cape Town. We've been in the northwest, we've been in Limpopo, we've been in Nkumalanga, we've been in Khauteng, we're now in the Western Cape. So we know what you expect by now. So we're going to warn you, sir, that something is going to say on the side of the table that you don't like or you don't agree with. Allow him or her to say it, ask them in his time. Because if you shout him or her down and he or she walks out of here and feels that they were not given an opportunity to express their views and they go and challenge it in the court and the court decides that the meeting of Bowford West was undemocratic. The voice of Bowford West will be scrapped from the final report. And in other words, this team here is going to be slaves. What will happen with the land? In the name of the liberty to go and the government must go. That's how important it is. We are not going to come back here to have decided we no longer fight against others. If the meeting doesn't proceed for whatever reason today, then Parliament is going to decide for Bowford West what must happen to the land and your voices will not find its place in our final report. That's how important it is. This is yours. You influence the report or you forfeit the right to influence the report. Your behavior. That's super long, it's very hard to understand. I don't think it's correct that these people must decide the future for you here in Bowford West because it's going to be a future that's going to affect you for a long, long time. Most comfortably. As we will talk about the Afrikaans. If you want to speak, are very competent, they will capture everything you're saying regardless of the language that you're saying it in and that will go into our our that are waiting for us in Cape Town. And after we've processed the written submissions and processed what you're going to tell us today. A, the Constitution because the people of Bowford West said. Or B, the Constitution doesn't. So it's very important that your voices are heard. Constitution in its current form. So that you understand what we're talking about. After we've read it, somebody will put a basis. Twenty-five sub-six. A person or community whose tenure of land is legally insecure as a result of past racially discriminatory laws or practices is entitled to the provided by an act of Parliament either to tenure which is legally secure or to comparable redress. Twenty-five sub-seven. A person or community depossessed of property after the nineteenth of June nineteen thirteen as a result of past racially discriminatory laws or practices is entitled to the extent provided by an act of Parliament either to restitution of that property or to equitable redress. Twenty-five sub-eight. No provision of this section may impede the state from taking legislative and other measures to achieve land, water and related reform in order to redress the results of past racial discrimination provided that any departure from the provisions of this section is in accordance with the provisions of section thirty-six-one. And finally, twenty-five sub-nine. Parliament must enact the legislative defractions as it the freedom of the world. Is the Constitution in its current form to allow the state to expropriate land without compensation? Oh, then you say, "Don't amend the Constitution," it's fine. If you feel that what I've just read does not enable the state to expropriate without compensation, then you say, "No, he doesn't allow the state to expropriate." And then tell us about your family, the animals you've got at home, how many cattle and horses, who let him go later. Start first with what is important. Because if you start first with who you are and how you are then he didn't see. How do you feel about the government? You can't you can't hear it, eh? See, I won't. Let me allow for translations and let me
... There will be a talk where this is what I know. Africans and Afrikaans will talk. Today we are political parties. But today fourteen words are not political parties. But well, the Parliament. What today is different from the Parliament's sitting is that when you come to the Parliament, today is different is that you do the work and the leaders of the Parliament go right to your audience. As you have learned, you have three minutes. That your three minutes are coming. What is important today is what you say, "Yeah, yeah." It was in the northwest and today is here in Bowford West. But today, people also say, "Well, I don't know." But you have to give the learning time to your office, your sitting as a ground medical department. What then means that the Bowford West is in the system of the final decision is decided. You can talk in a talk where you are comfortable. Then you see now the list of the for the day start. By the is the article five and two of the government thirteen and for the lunga. I'm trying to get the lunga. I'm doing now. I tell you, I'm telling my lunga. I'm telling my lunga. God, I'm trying to tell you, I'm telling you now. I'm telling my lunga. I'm telling you. I'm telling you. I'm telling you. Tell me. But now I'm telling you. 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 I'm telling you.
I walk from to
Good morning, good morning.
Hello, good morning. Good morning, good morning. My name is Mamburu. I'm a member of the Constitutional Committee, a member of Parliament. I'm a
Monreni, Tawela. I am Madilu Mutabo, a member of this committee representing African National Congress.
Representing the
My name is Thabo Mukwele.
Representing EFF in Cape Town.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. I'm Liesl van der Marve. I'm a member of the Parliament and I'm fourteen words of the Inkatha Freedom Party. Thank you.
All right. Fifteen speakers here and fifteen speakers there. And when we're done, we'll take another round of fifteen, fifteen, fifteen. Everybody's going to start. I saw fifteen on the here, fifteen on the here, fifteen on the here. And you, also you at the back. Uh, uh. Put your hands down, you don't even know what I'm asking. Put them down. I want eight females, or ma. Eight female hands. Here. And then the youth's voice is going to be heard and the old people's voices are going to be heard. So I'm looking for eight female hands, if there are any. The two on the side. And then you two, ma, come that side. Yes, you with the maroon, yes. That's four. Four female hands this side. There is a hand there, yes, ma. Yes, ma'am. Six. I'm talking two more female hands. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma. Yes. Yes. Make sure ask one, please, when I call you, you come here, sir. Sir, you're number two. At the back with the blue, you're number seven. Female hand here. None? Yes, that's all. And then you, sir. And then you, sir. Yes. And yes. And then you, sir. Yes. You, sir. You two. That's all. Please make your way in there. If there's somebody here on the top that wants you free to your voice. We have you as the females and opportunities. There is enough for all of us. I can't I can't. All right. The side. People who let's take you, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, please come this side. You. You want the kaki cap? This one here with the for you for the and you, sir. All right. Okay, let's allow them just to come as before. On the don't close the eye. You have to eye. Okay.
Section twenty-five must be implemented in the Constitution. Since my birth, I'm landless and there dignity and economic freedom is a must for economic freedom. And there is for section twenty-five. The Constitution for every land. Uh, greetings everyone. Greetings everyone. They took our dignity, so we want our dignity back. That's why we amend section twenty-five to be in the Constitution. Thank you.
People here in Bowford West. The people have worked. And we can open the door, create the work. The rest of when people sit here by the house and they still have their own. It's unfair. Municipality may consider now not by the house. But when it was in Friedenberg there. The kids must come back. Say they have seen a but for best municipality, police the, the, the trunk of the woman. I learned the learning to give them here. Let's say that I'm aware that I need to work here, but today kids are writing about the Bowford West, they are late exams are written. That's pretty poor kids for the but thus I I was here. I guess some of my owners are going to ground off. But by there on the there, when you think on the school, we're on the town, we're going to town, we're on, on the on the height of the war. Then I feel I feel on the world, when on the bay of the war. Then we're here on the when you hear I can't remember what I I'm I'm I'm
Yes, sir.
Property, property. And I think small scale farmers believe that the entire section twenty-five should be reviewed to give effect on subsections five. This will be impossible if section twenty-five point two is not implemented on the basis that land reform is part of public interest. Land reform legally and policies have not addressed skew land ownership patterns agrarian structure in South Africa. Rural lovely woods have not been supported in order to improve the quality of life. Small scale farmers have been included from excluded from land reform discussions as they are not in organized into a formal structure. Just as equitable compensation is not clarified the subcentric subsectionary budgeting budget for land reform processes which is based on market values. The, the failure of land reform cannot only be blamed on the just
As against just going on talk shows around the country is the in, in the name of getting the people's view to Parliament, should embark on a process that calls for a national referendum on land and the and the total repeal of section twenty-five of the Constitution. People's views can be manipulated in the schedule, uh, in the secluded corridors and offices of Parliament, whereas the people's choice by way of referendum it is more transparent. In conclusion, at stake as regards addressing the, the land is not restricting the issue of the amendment of section twenty-five of the Constitution per se. It is about the repeal and also about giving the coysan. They are rightful place constitutionally and then the land debate can start. Any purported amendment that leaves the coysan out of discussion is in violation of their rights. Which is therefore a violation of the African people's right as a collective. We cannot compensate people that have title deeds that are dripping blood. Criminals belong in jail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, chairperson, members of Parliament. Um, the African National Congress in the Central Karuu. Um, section twenty-five of the Constitution must be amended. We are supporting the amendment of the Constitution without compensation. The, the expropriation of land without compensation. Chairperson is evidence in the Central Karuu. If you look in the Central Karuu, plus minus three hundred farms in the Central Karuu. The question is that who is owning those farms? If you have to make a land audit in terms of who is owning those farms, where are the owners? Some of them is not even staying in the Central Karuu. Chairperson is also evidence that the majority of the people in the Central Karuu is living in poverty. Many of our youth have to leave the Central Karuu and look for, uh, uh, opportunities somewhere else. The land must be returned back to the majority of the people of the Central Karuu. So that if you give, if you, if you, if you travel on the N one, you go to, on, on the road, the road to, to Apadim, on the road to, 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 to Otsol, you will see the open spaces, the land which is not productive, where our people can benefit out of those land which are not used. Therefore, the Constitution must be amended so that this land in the Central Karuu will be beneficial to the people and the majority people of the Central Karuu. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. I'm here for five. Uh, I'm not born in Bowford, but anyway. Um, if the Constitution is changed or not, they are going to be a couple of other words. And what's weird? Um, my, my concern is not not the land, but my, my concern basis is now all this other word has chaos. Has the property rights to give at where it's built? Or has the nature of a bull, what he can't bully? What does it mean to the content of the nature? On the side, there's almost forty people here, blasphemous. And you have a minute and a forty minutes away. And that's a big career. So what I want to see or what I want to say is that and then the Constitution is changed or not, can you get the other properties? Oh, that's it. That is it, all say, or fat alles nee. As you go to the land, it's not the land. Clap. Number two. My concern is that's the chaos. And we want the ground to deal. Has it owners, yes, or has it a bull, yes, or a nature that can't bully? But the job is to set your eyes on the situation. And that the money to pass that's a good to bully, a good to bully. That is, it's more than that, it's not. That's a crack in the economy. So then I have to go back and uh, the coysan, men's. I'm still here to say that the government want to deal with the consignment. And I'm ignoring the people. But they're dealing with the issue. And the land we're in a couple and the consignment people. But that was mine, the prayer of ours. That was mine, the door of ours. I'm a good example. And we're going to all government, for the, the all government, for the the SAK can be sent and the clear line. But now you're going to make a comparison in a quarter year. Sick of it, I'm glad to dream. So what we can do as men? I brought my ass, as clear as men's. Also, cause dignity back. Also, cause land rich. Also, can you know me, what we're, what's in chaos? Also, that also this is a problem or art what I need cost is not. Also, we did it. Also, all this would order, like, a ski. All this would wear, it's been ordered, it's been in your mind. That's all I can say to you.
Fine, thank you, man. Your time starts now, sir.
Good morning, everybody. Um, I'm from concerned young people of South Africa. Uh, my view is against this Constitution that it can be, uh, um, amended. Um, we cannot go around things. And this thing is a very huge thing that happened for our political leaders. They triggered through this, it's something that's huge that have been triggered to the public. And all we hear, it's not just, um, about the land, but hatred is growing up. Things from the past, what the other people have done to the other nation. And all this that is triggering, it's, it's promoting racism. Uh, racism, criticism and people are already pointing fingers at, at other people already. Blackmailing other people at this. But where is that South Africa that was fought for by Baba Nelson Mandela? I remember, we are the young people of South Africa. We are young and there's none of young people amongst us here. Most of us are not present, but this thing in the future, it will affect us. And there was once year before, after, after, after freedom of South Africa, there was a song that was, was saying of South Africa, how we love South Africa, how beautiful South Africa is. We've shown the whole world that South Africa could bring peace. It's a question to our leaders, to the Parliament. Will this promote the peace in our land? Will this law being amended? Will it bring people together? Will it bring growth to the country? Or will it break the country down? Thank you very much.
I thank you, sir.
Good morning. I'm seven years old. I'm a boy, a heart here. Deal today, don't. I'm going to talk about my father. I'm going to talk about the ground. Now, in a lockstone. My pa had a good life. I'm there, born. I had to learn work on the plaza. And I could come to thirteen years old on the plaza I can. The white man's scene had some up, grow. To the other end to the right, come to die, come over. And to he all the old men's on the plaza did not come back. We're here. Also, it's a little bit with my partner, donkey carretty guy. And also, I didn't meet him, get ready. And to the scene come over uh, the onlooker, what he to see my pa is too old to be there to play. The house of us was full, members of good. But then also my pa the onlooker what also we're going to say thirteen years old. To say, no man what can the donkey carretty bestie? To meet my mama, met my sickle and my sister sickle, um, on the path to come, the day to my pa, we're here. To say, swak see. To meet also on the donkey carretty lay and met him, that lockstone to go on him, but the doctor to bring. And to my ma say that my ma went north from the plaza. By a plaza base what's our family, what also what's a good road, what? And to us, they are come. And this was the land, what was there, believe me, had my pa to die, I've got stuff. I could have a grave and I can't the plaza up, up the tour, you have a spot. That's the hard series for me. Now, to the ground, I say, you begin in Bowford West. Thus, I'm one of the earliest what to get in. My mothers, for me, what's someone to get in, had let them I've got stuff. My bag here to us, not on that deal. I've tried to, not on that deal to carry. That I could have learned where to the twelve years old. By a large, to, to, to learn where for my pa, can it be more? That I can learn well, to 12 years old, by a lot, to learn well, from my father, can't it more? Not, I thank you, though.
Thank you, my dear. Now, will start to say, you at the back will start to say. Your time starts now, ma.
Thank you, I stand before you today as a resident of the Western Cape and a citizen of South Africa. So let me state for the record that there is no need to change section 25 of the constitution in its current form for a quicker or more effective process of land reform. But I ask this committee in front of you today, why are you continuing with this hearing here in the Western Cape, when our own president quite clearly stated his political questions and positions before the democratic process of public hearings have been completed in this province? I think that you should scrap these hearings, as you are wasting public money, and you tell the people in the Western Cape that no matter what they think, their voices actually do not matter. Because the process in the Western Cape is flawed, as a decision has already been taken at the highest level, and the right to the voice of people is merely a tick box. But let me continue. Land is about ownership. Land is about opportunity and into and access into the economy. All South Africans deserve their rights to land. Land reform is desperately needed. But I must ask you, why is there a push for expropriation of land without compensation, when this high level report that we've all read has clearly stated it has nothing to do with compensation and everything to do with corruption and political will at a national level? Why does national government want to change the constitution to speed up land reform, when it already owns 4,300 farms, that could be given to the people here to farm in South Africa? When the budget for land reform is at an all-time low of 0.4%, with less than 0.1% for land redistribution? And when only 2% of land reform projects currently are even a success in South Africa? Under a current national policy, government buys land and leases it to emerging farmers with no option for title deed, even until 50 years later. How is this possible? In fact, the state still owns millions of hectares of property, which have not been transferred to the people, but why has it not? Under this national government current land policies, the majority of South Africans will not own land, or achieve the generation wealth that many of these people are talking about, or form any fixed assets for their generations of children to come. For every succeed, for every South African to succeed, they must be given the opportunity to own their own piece of South Africa, with their own title deeds, as their dignity and future depends on it. Land expropriation without compensation is not needed, as the constitution clearly provides for the just and equitable distribution of land.
But that, your time has expired.
All you need is a competent government, I think.
Thank you. Your time starts now.
Greetings. I do believe for, for section 25 must be amended. Why? Uh, we have been compromising for a long time now. Africans have been living in misery. The, the people that are, let's say, I give this all, the perpetrators, they've been oppressing us for a long time now. Look, I standing in front of you. Uh, I don't have a land to own, not say me only, but all the Africans. We have been like, we have been not considered for a long time. Look what happened in 1913. The National Nativ Land Act, that was implemented by the government of a post-apartheid government. People have been taken forcibly, their lands have been forcibly taken from them. So why can't we take the land without, uh, expropriation, taking the land without expropriation? The land is being taken from us by force. Now, we, we take it gently. So if they, if they wanted to the other way, it's fine. Because they did the other way. So it's only two words that are, that are, uh, two alphabets. It's either the M word or the P words. So the, the simple way for, for, for this to happen is only for the P word. Because the M word, I don't want to say it, because it's going, it's going to bust the ears. The land must be expropriated without compensation. The land, the land act that, that is being implemented in the 1913, uh, it's taken our rights, actually, they didn't take, they forcibly moved. Look what happened in Sofia Town. Look what happened in Kuru, Lexi. There are many places that the, the Nativ Land Act have benefited the whites, while we suffered. We've been taken from the fertile land to the, uh, the land that is new poor. So why are we wasting our time sitting here? Let's take the land. We, we don't have to hesitate. We have to take the land. We have been sitting here for long, for a long, the time, the time that we have been sitting here is that, is the time that we have long time gone. I should have, the people, we should have been sitting in our homes now. You're wasting the time. We want, it's take it now. We want the land, surely. And now, we're equipped here and here. There is not something that they're going to suffer when they did that, no. We did it before they came in 1652. We have been living, working with the, with the hands. So what's going to make us to, the economy to, to wreck?
Thank you, sir.
Um, good morning, Dylan Mitchell. Um, I will also, from the beginning, say that the Republican Party is ultimately a cliff. When the, the men from the west car, the inside, it clearly never skillgma, and the presidential finale decide on the, the, uh, the, the ground to be wisely. But I stand ultimately, I was ultimately against the, the wisely. And let me, let me say this out straight and, and frankly. The reality is, many of our people sit here today, thinking that it's about land and land only. And that people will be dished out land. We are misleading our people. Government will own the land. All our people will remain tenants of this government for the rest of their lives. Government will make millions and millions of rent on, on, on rent that each one of us will have to pay. Someone has talked about the young people. Now, as a young person that must raise a family in South Africa, I can tell you today, we as the young people of this country and of this central Karoo will bear the brunt of an irresponsible government and irresponsible decision to, to, to go back, to say that, to, to, on land grabs. Is this, is this what this government wants? To divide people on the basis of race and of class? Are we going back to becoming Zimbabwe? Because we, the young people, will ultimately, with respect, chair, people will be long gone, the people that make the decisions today, and we will bear the brunt of it. We will have to raise children in a country, and we will have to pay those rent. We will become those tenants, not the people making the decision today. So I am completely against, I'm completely against it, because we all want ownership. We all strive to become the A and R's of, of, of the land. And we're the A and R's of what's on his, that's not the place, that's not the house, the state, that's on his, the men who have worked for a long time, and I have to pay, that's your house, that's going to be destroyed. And, and, and we can't do that, my dear, for example, and, and on that, and on that, the reeds, namely, or the president's reeds, the decision, when I, when I, a negative request of your commentator, on your inside of Bovford West today, to hurt it to me. And that indeed, well, that you're not with the president, and say, public participation is a cliff here. The men from Bovford system must go where, by the way.
Fine, thank you, my dear. Yes, your time starts now.
Good morning, I'm representing Concerned Young People of South Africa. I'm representing Concerned Young People of South Africa. I disagree with the section 25. Reason being, this thing is not going just about land. It's about the future of our, of our youth. Now, we see already this fights. Everybody's pointing fingers about this land, and my land, and your land, and everybody's land. But the government is sitting there and laughing, while we are fighting outside and pointing each other, this and that. The future is dark out there for our young, for our youngsters. And our youngsters cannot speak, because we are busy, they are busy with all kinds of things, while the government is laughing at us. And now, they bring this thing in front of us about land. And now, because we are looking at the bottom, nobody's looking at the future. Now, we are just here to open the people's eyes and just to let them realize that this is not just about land, we're talking, let's talk about the motive, what is happening behind the story about the land. Let's talk about what is going behind in the back room, what is going on there. They're putting the land in front of us. But we as youth, we are standing up. Concerned young people will not keep their mouth, no matter if you like it or you don't like it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Your time starts now.
Uh, good morning, honourable members of parliament. My name is Eugene Mapotolo. I'm a community activist, I'm also a youth leader, legitimate youth leader in the Central Karoo. Um, one, for me, I rise in support for section 25 to be amended. I also want the expiration of land without compensation to be amended. Now, reason being, the section 25 is also undermining the very same constitution, the chapter to the Bill of Rights, the sub one, when it talks about the value of human dignity and freedom. Number two, the section 25 itself, it's also not giving a clear process how to deal with the land issue. We have seen the willing, willing buy, the willing sell, it's not working. How they can be peace, whereas there are those who are living thus in the community, they've been evicted on farms, they came to us, they don't have, they don't have place to stay. Now, it must be amended, and very soon. The other issue I want to raise, Jefferson, is the issue of the rural town land. We don't have houses. They're not talking about agricultural sector, we don't have houses, we want to build houses. In a household, 10 people, a father and a mother, and kids living together, there is no human dignity there. When you talk about freedom, how we can have freedom, but we don't have access to land? If you want to talk about peace, let us close the gap between the privileged white people who got the land, the stolen land by guns. We need to make sure now, we follow the processes by saying that, let us close the gap. Let us, we want the expiration of land without compensation. Now, we want to build churches. In terms of health, in the backyard, we don't believe in western medication. We, as African people, we believe in hips. We want to plant in the backyard, in order for us to can live a healthy lifestyle and live longer. For me, I'm saying, mau buye um saba, mau buye.
Siapangaba.
Greetings, Chair, members of parliament. I'm angry, reasonable, representing Kezum Karua Environmental Justice Movement. Uh, I would say, the sections, section 25 must be reviewed. And I will not state my reason, but I will make it clear what I'm going to say now will spell out my reason. Section 25 make it possible for expropriation to take place, while the first four sections make it impossible. So therefore, I say, section 25 must be reviewed to give effect on subsection 5. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir, my name is Truman Prince. I'm from the ANC in Bovford West. Of course, uh, I'll try to be very condensed, the summarization of this report. First and foremost, uh, Chair, it suffice to say that the total surface of South Africa is estimate 122 million hectares. And that is clear that the majority population of black Africans, I, I am included as an albino, own the smallest percentage of the country's land, compared to the white counterparts, who own almost three quarters. One also need to take into consideration, having land without title deeds means nothing, ultimately, at the end of the day. We all, I must also reiterate, that the land was seized from the Koikoi, and later the Sam, to increase Dutch grazing pastures, expand their farming activities, and to establish settlements. It is out there, correct, Chair, in the public domain, distribution of land in South Africa is skewed, totally skewed. 67% belongs to white commercial agricultural land. 15, 15% black, 10 other state land, and 8 remainder urban areas. Our constitution is a conglomeration of all the best practices in the world. But the execution of our constitution and the implementation of our constitution is very, very weak. Currently, in Bovford West, in the area jurisdiction of Central Karoo, there are 452 farms. Marisburg, 150. Prince Albert, 690. Lanesburg, 552 farms. All of them, most of them belong to white people. I am of the, the view that there is no other option for us to amend the constitution, so that the issue on land now become unavoidable. Nobody got the patent right to interpret the law. You can have lawyers and lawyers, you can have experts and experts. And I want to read, subject to compensation, the amount of which, and the time and manner of payment of which have either been agreed to by those affected or desired, or approved by God.
Your time has expired. Yours has expired. Thank you. Thank you. Your time starts now, sir.
I'm Sean Mayers, all protocol observed. Um, I'm against amendment of section 25, it should stay as it is. The amendment or changing of our beloved constitution, especially the most vital chapter called the Bill of Rights, is clearly undermining the value and the rights of every South African. By changing section 25 in chapter 2 to expropriate land without compensation, and that the citizens should lease their own birthright from the ANC government would clearly destroy our, destroy our weak economy and sell our land to the corrupt. The fact that our national fiscus is in chaos due to bad governance does not mean that the ANC should take all our land and then lease it back to the people. Remember, the leasing of land was once policy of our own apartheid government, and our forefathers cried to at least have a piece of, to call it their own. Vet and petrol increases also not the answer to the restore our national debt. Please look into what happened to other countries in the world, examples Zimbabwe, Venezuela, just to mention these two, where the corrupt are governing and the voters are suffering. The resolution made at the ANC Congress does not mean it is on behalf of all the people of South Africa, nor does the president of South Africa has the power to announce that the ANC will amend the constitution and expropriate land without compensation, which then clearly proves that these public engagements are just a smokescreen, and that any input with regards to section 25 will not be considered, and it is clearly a waste of taxpayers' money on every today's event. Unemployment and inflation is rising rapidly, and should be the main focus of all political leadership, instead of dividing our nation racially and morally. The facts are, they are, the facts are, and it is clear that the ANC has failed to govern with capacity, and the only way for them is to bring our nation with propaganda and to drive the hidden agendas with this topic. I thank you.
I thank you too, sir. Yes, sir.
Chair, um, I think there's nothing wrong with section 25. I think the problem was the last 23 years, for instance, the government of, government of the day did nothing give less support for the upliftment of the people and giving them land. That's the real big problem. As you know, and I heard it this morning too, or really the ANC, at its report, a forty to go, has decided that section 25 should be amended to assure the expropriation, expropriation of without compensation. So deliberations today, through your hearings later on too, to get views from the people, how they experience the problems of, of, of South Africa on this issue, I think is more or less irrelevant. President Aboposa and the ANC already decided otherwise, also on your behalf. They jumped the gun. That's wrong. The process is not over. What about the people of the Western Cape? They haven't got the chance to speak before the president, in his wisdom. Tell us that the ANC is also in favor of amending, uh, section 25. I think we, we must, at least, on, on the belastings, I'd leave it, what is the event, and it here, that no event for it's others, that is, to go to the west car, too. You look as commission, that you can sit there, go there, 500 days.
Your time is for streng.
My name is Vriesa Yanges, also a community activist there. My, from onset I'm saying, we need to change section twenty-five of the constitution. If we believe socio-economic rights are important rights, then the issue of ownership of land must be taken seriously. And one of those mechanisms is this of the expropriation of land without compensation. For the past twenty-three years, government has put in place a program to address this issue. And three fundamental things happened with this mechanism that was put over willing by willing sale. One, farmers have sold the most inappreciable land to South Africans. These same farmers who are claiming this government to be so corrupt, they have bought land through this government program, through conservancy groups that are pretended to be owned by their farmworkers, who has government buy land from me for myself. This farmer, this corruption that this private, commercial farmers are talking about is so strong within themselves. But they find it so wrong, it has been institutionalized with them that if you are a black landowner, you are bound to fail. White farmers have failed, you can go around here, you will see unused land, poor farming by white farmers. And then you go and look, they're talking about two percent of the land that has been transferred to black people. That, you know, we have more examples of emerging farmers who are doing very well. They are doing so well, but they are constrained by land. We cannot have thirty emerging farmers on one piece of land with different commodities. Where is the chance for growth? You will never grow. You are set to fail. These are the truth they won't tell us. But President Ramaphosa will make a statement on behalf of the ANC. The ANC has sent, the Democratic Alliance leaders have put their position that they don't want. President Ramaphosa is capacitive as the President of the ANC, he will tell us as South Africans that what you sent us to do, those submissions have come and the ANC has taken a decision, that your needs are what the ANC is going to do for you. We're not gonna be stopped along the way, that Ramaphosa cannot speak around this issue. Telenor Cord has spoken on this issue as a member of Parliament and a leader of Coke. And you will see here, you will never see a yellow shirt around Karu, because people of the Karu don't associate with people who don't want land.
Your time is expired.
I.
Yes sir, your time starts now.
I hundred percent support section twenty-five. I think the biggest mistake the ANC have done is to consult with murderers. They came here and murdered our people in sixty fifty-two, and now you consult with them. They never consult with us when they take our land. They take the land of Krotua and they take the land of Chakazoo. Now we must fight about our own land. And I want to tell the ANC, if you still consulting these people, we will not go to the voting station twenty-ninety. We will punish you that you can realize twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, we will give you back in power and tell you and give you a mandate to take our land back. That is the first thing. Statistics show us seventy-nine percent of the people of South Africa are black, is forty-one million people. And they only own seven percent of the land. White people are nine percent of South Africa. They own seventy-nine percent of our land. Colored people are also nine percent and they own fifteen percent. It's not right. They came here sixty fifty-two, they take the land from, from the Western Cape to Grafrinet, let them back by. They fight with the causes, even though it was not enough, they go to the Free State. They fight, they took the land, they go to Kasulunata, they take our land. And still you come here and consult with them. Nineteen thirty, they decided they want everything, no black person must own land. And they don't call the ANC in those meetings, because the ANC was already forming nineteen twelve. They don't call us in those meetings and said, we want to consult with you to take the land. They just decide and they take the land nineteen thirty. And then these young white farmers came here today and tell us, we must forget and forgive them. If they want us to forgive and to forget, let us share the land. Let us share the minerals of this country so that black people can have dignity. At the moment, they don't have dignity. I'm a worker, but I can't buy a house. And I can't even get a RDP house because I don't qualify, but I can't buy a what house. But when a young white person grow up, he don't even have to go to school. His father can just learn him how to run a B and B and run the farm. We must come here with our education and still run the farm for them for peanuts. So comrades, please, let us give the land back to our people. And comrades from the EFF, I'm wearing a red jersey, I'm not a member of the EFF. I am a member of the ANC and I want to tell the people of South Africa, it's our duty to vote for the ANC so that the ANC can give our land back.
Ah, your time is over now. Your time starts now sir.
Thank you very much Chair, and your panel noted the EFF there, who is also responsible for this process today. We are in agreement as emerging farmers that the constitution should be amended so that we can start, so that we can start farming and get our stuff out of our yards. Comrades in the hands of white commercial farmers must be redistributed to local emerging farmers. Comrades with supporting infrastructure should be made available to small-scale farmers. The state must ensure that local authorities are financially empowered and have human resource with a capacity to manage comrades. Legislature that enforce the role of local authorities and comrades, management must be put in place. We said with the issue there, because of the shortage of land that we start burying our loved ones in what grave? That is because we don't have land. We have one-room houses where one family have to live in that one room because we don't have land to build these houses. Pregnancies, pregnancies is escalating because this family has to share one room and everything is happening in that room. We said with the problem of drugs because of unemployment in our communities due to poverty. Poverty is created by people who cannot work for themselves because the land is a job creator. So when we have land, we can create jobs. When we have land, we can put food on our tables. We got these small space houses we living in, you can't even make a tent in the yard. So the poverty levels is already deepening in our communities. We are already for the past twenty-five years in a Zimbabwe. We tried to move out of the Zimbabwe so that we can start redistribute the land so that those who can support their families can have this land. We call on you as, as, as Parliament, we call on you as leadership. We giving you the mandate here today, go and amend the constitution so that we can have the land. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Yes sir.
Erm, ik ben de parlementgebruik, ik ben ergens in het gevoel van horen en ik praatte mijn mama ze ta af die kans. Dank je voor die voorrekening. Ik is hier voor die wat niet kan horen niet, die wat die kan praten niet, en misschien voor die wat al dood is ook. Ik is Reverend N K Minis, ik verteed boeren, die klein veel boeren rondom die district en ook ligt van kleeks, wat geboren is, daar George in haar area bijen danken. Die wet, vijftentwintig moet geskrabpt worden, dat is jammer nou, als het mensen raak. Die reden hiervoor is, zonder vergoeding, wat ons het niet geldt om plaatsen te koop niet. Het gaat hier als ik hoor van mensen wat jaar op plaatsen gebleven, gewerkt en dan weggejaag raakt voor zonne. Het gaat hier. Op drieëntzehendag was het nog steeds mijn droontje van horen die staan. Dat ik een stukje grond zal lezen waar ik mijn kunnen kan opleer, wat ons in die plaatsen bewerkt. Ons allemaal in die plaatsen gewerkt voor de, en je kan zien today traditie of groepen mensen uitsterven die er weggejaag met perka die, ook het gaat de naam gehad van die perka die mensen of die donkige karmen of die karijde mensen, wat geboren wordt langs die pad of die pad. Als je bij die dorp angeslitten naast aan die plaat, dan krijg je vierentwintig jaar om daar te staan, zo zullen ze noemen die uitspanning. Van daar moet je weer trek naar andere uitspanning toe. Zo, dit is recht dat wij niet lekker om te horen hier te komen staan en amper te plijt. Zal ik dan nog een stadwies om een stukje grond te bewerken, mij onderdom. Mijn plij dood is voor horen, skrabbe. Veranderd zo dat het ons mensen kan aanpassen. Ik hoor bij je van die spreek, wat die gaat praten. Praat van, dus je noorag om de skrabbe, dus je noorag, ik, ik blameer i niet. Maar ik wil voor i vraag voor horen hier, hoe komt die zo lang gewacht? Hij was deel van die mensen wat gezien hebt, we zitten ons mensen langs die pad, reet nat onder die botjes, onder die boemen. Nog een beetje dag had ik gezien dat mensen bij de ons dorp moet wegvlug om schiling te zoeken, klein kinderkiste daar, waar is eeuwen toe? Nou, we eeuwen hebben met andere zogen doen erop om eeuwen te passen. Veranderd mensen, want ik denk ook, als het die bijspoorde van anderen gaat mij nageslappten wat voor horen iets is, je gaat opstandig worden en daar gaat andere dingen gebeuren. Zo laat het gebeuren terwijl je aankant is. Ik dank je.
Goed dank je madier.
Ik zeer morgen bij, goedemorgen. Erm, ik wilde voor horen praten voor, voor rechter. Want ik het op rech. Ik het op blanke pa. Ik het op blanke pa, vol drinken is. Allemaal, tuwiers zijn dood en ien als een gemet ik was hier. Hoe kom ik daar geen grond krijgen? Allemaal blanke zet me daar grond. Allemaal blanke zet, en voor ons afgeslagen van een grond af. Oos moet dan, oos moet nog schikken om het te krijgen. Oos is. Ik is alleen ien wat moet schikken voor de. Maar ik kan leren zijn grond te krijgen, wie die wagen een grond te krijgen. Daarom kom ik tot hier, om het chair als mijn grond ik moet het krijgen. Ik zeer bij dank je.
Thank you sir. Your time starts now.
Ik zeer goedemorgen iemand. Hier in de land van de coat of arms. Hier in de Kam Kaka, I welcome you here. Now we the descendants of the Songkais, of South Africa's first indigenous people, we denounce that misnomer which was imposed on us, that misnomer of Koi's son. Because it was done without our free prior and informed consent, which is mandatory in terms of the international customary law which we the indigenous people of this land resort to, because we are not in the constitution of this country. It is a shame that I as an indigenous person, I am an Ainaka Kanikun, but we are, the, the, the Cape High Court told us that we are still resorting under the nineteen thirty-three Commonwealth Act. So, in actual fact, I'm standing here as a subject of the, of the ground, but let's go further. We as the indigenous people of this land of southern Africa, we rely on the two thousand and two International Criminal Court's ruling which set aside the use of terrorilius or like the people who take this land, they call this land no man's land. And that, that decision said that the disenfranchisement and the aggregation of rights is wrong. And you know that ICC decision was taken from an African case. And not only the African case of the people, my people, the Namman. Because apart from the fact that I'm an Ainika Kanikun, some of my forebears are Namans, Nama people. So, we, we urge the South African government and its parliamentary partners to respect the two thousand and one Constitutional Court's ruling regarding the.
Your time has expired.
Namman people of, of.
Your time has expired. I'll continue to remind you that when you come to the mic, you answer the question, must the constitution be amended or not? Everything else you can say afterwards, but initially, if you don't do that, you deprive yourself the right of influencing us, because we're going to take a decision. Whether you say anything or not, ons kan besluiten. So that's an i belang, of ons de serie wuful i, who are dicepse van die grondwet. Your time starts now.
Ja goedemorgen, eerm, mijn vader dank je ze, voor je herentje wat ik nog heb gekregen. Maar ik ga voor i vragen als parlementen mensen. Als opblief, gee ons rechter terug. Oos verlang ons rechter weer terug als opblief. Oos het op verloren gekregen en ons zal het weer gaan terugheen. We gaan i vragen da, zo lang i tijt te vermoorden. Gee ons terug ons rechter als opblief ik vragen. Dank je.
Once again, bye dank je madier. So your time starts now.
Goedemorgen, mijn naam is Wiekus Vanapool, ik werk bij AfVoorum. Oos is teen die voorgestelde wijziging van artikel vierentwintig vijftentwintig van die grondwet. Oos beskouwt natuurlijk hier die proces als overblinderij in een klip. Vooral gezien in die liftal van, dat die achwaar president rechtsaangekondigd heeft. Dat die wijziging om diestal te weten, plaatsgevind. Place can find. Make us on the. The D M H out of class from here process. I can do it this tall. Want on a young son of a good. My opposite on him on permanent of his own room to on them. Is next others as this town. On a young son of a good. Is a very drawing of the verleger to school. Here the bat is the machine in the bar. Ma, also by fighter who. This is as a result of the high regency, the mislucky. That was open point stand. On this tall, wait to make. On a young son of a good. Is the program, the regency, on my own mislucky to verblume. Also on the steam, rest the tea. With another word, rest telling. Ma, ni herverdeling. And to see herverdeling. Blue racist is the process is. What the rest, what the rest of the A and R. Be part of how I say, the legitimate A and R is. On a young son of a good. Sal the economy for me to. The international Samilewin. Need to wash the water and it's a great piece of on the international Samilewin to wash. That will be lessons in gedrang van kom. When you hear the why is it going there, go forward. The best step what the regency can name on ground and forming to be for. Is on title act to give. And the Jewish war and rain men's. What he's on staatsgrund who. The regency's the ware do. Is not on a in dom. Under arm men's to verdeal me. Ma, on the A and Dom self to beset. The war's safe as a ground, I know it's cap. What did the regency verdraaien? And it is a lean. Ground and forming, it totally, clearly, miss look. A mere aggressive voice acting of any people like. So flash line to the mere aggressive miss look. Energy. It's a weird plaque plaque in the land. Top it is there. A why is it going on the ground weight? On this tall to wait. Shall a unstuck bar energy and say Africa me ever. By the donkey.
Once again, by the donkey. Your time starts now, sir.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dirk Foyen. I'm against the amendment. Of section 25. As I think it fully addressed. The transformation of the ownership of land in South Africa, which I support. Mr. Chairman, I'm a proud South African. I'm African, was. And was specific a member of the African African tribe, the only white tribe in Africa. Oh, it's the good deal that the ski did is. But the other stomach of Africa. The Koi's son, the Easter men's, the Koi's last, the Zulus, no more than. A ski is once home this, the after, look at power hundred year. They always present home me, sometimes that blue to the verge of, yeah, work ground. The prequel is for all the reality of the period of the battalion that is the half of order. Later, the Koi's last go over it. And the green's over. The Zulus go over it and the Am, Amkroos do over. And later, the African and largest go over, over. Over it. And the after bureau over. Now here the ski is, is it always bad, it's very bad. But that's the man here, but the rosy can turn around. And it has tell me, with the slack me. Next to a minstres, you Koi's. Next to a minstres, you Koi's last, the cast is here, I'm the last ever skill can drive straight to the oscar to. This is the landscape escape. For in the forage in you, while the regency's. Berichte, a more real wetter since the 1913. Night of line, I, 1950, Bruce area, I. Uh, geimplementeered. What means the banana, what means the ground back. Ma, also the nation by my car come. At 1994, and also the sales for the rest. Also, when I come, also, that can it go here, that the care of passing the. Also, when I come, it's going to ask. With article, uh, section 25 of the ground weight. That's a right to me, um, the verkeerde me to do. The verkeerde me is on my own, on 625, the main, on my own, I don't have a good mood like to mark. This is all next to a more real, this is you. Better from the forage in the national party. First, it is the regering, earnest, it's for ground, shall I did what it's. After 25 years, it's good break. I can be good enough, here the handle, but she, but in the last a par, you have a good. And when he say that's the geld he. I can hear the prayer for 450 places about western district. It's come, it need to come a six million yard. Run for the year, I can't get a morse. This could you have a western district go back. That is hell, as the regering, earnest. The regering's field politic. That's for the last 23 years, by a man, get done as a prayer. Also, the prayer for the 400 places.
It is a speaker. Yes, sir.
Good day to all the parliament's leaders and all the passengers. I'm Mr. Peter Van Wijk, I'm the lead of the. I'm from Ljukamka. And I'm particularly for the foot pedestals, uh, the community of Ljukamka. Uh, namens the community of Ljukamka. Uh, for all that the article 25. Uh, back here, um, not geimplementeer word. Um, I believe it's for a good reason. Uh, round to Ljukamka. Ljukamka is a place to live, net lang's the in here. Uh, there is a vervale place along the in here. Where, uh, van on's open and on my group is. Destics works on base. And you mean, there is new. There the place is. S B C. For seven years, 10, 20 years. Led the man here, that dog. And Ljukamka is a very clean, arm, moody, a place. Uh, the community. Full that. Uh, also it a nafrage at noon by the skill and department. Uh, round to, uh, that the place, what are so, uh, dominant. But also, can you answer the ring? Also, it later, I've got a number to patrol you, um, is a. What will can also be seen that. That the place of work can learn. So S B C. Beware, that the place of work, anyone. So, uh, Ljukamka's community. Shall it by a bar here. Uh, as the parliament's leader, all it, uh, would can come. And terms of, uh, as all the skill, that I think. And break can name. Uh, so that economic, uh, bemachtung, uh, can last. By the donkey.
Once again, by the donkey. Sir.
Good morning, um, good sir. Commenter here, my name is David Wallamster. Uh, MP in progress. Chief person. For me, as here, um, 65, the scrap and 56500. A click and it's a steamer. The real for that is. The regering the party. It's good policies, ma, it's very strict with the implementing of the policies. The real for that is. The Everest is there last month, 370 years old, he can not 370 years, but for the stick of ground, but for on today. You must say, what for me to give or sorry, Reverend. The regering the party, it's a freedom charter in 1955, 50 good vehicle. And I freedom charter is now not today, but not least, what's it for the. It's a ophin. So. The implementing of all the policies, the implementing of the 650, I can, the men's are hard. On say. That's 4, all the 4 million places that the regering beset, all the 4 million places. How come the erst damag can't on the on's men's to give? On's prayer. How come is there all the 6 million men's that want ground is a motor. And finally, is it not here in the stall? This is not no implementer. But on's is now up ground for, on will have the men's ground below. The regering is a, it is very good down. On my on's men's, the good feeling to speak. And noises to speak. And now comes with ground, this 2010, fall in here, this poll, this, 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 this. Now comes the way with the men's and say for the men's, also can of you a, a ground here. This can enter evergait. No, but no it be here. The A and C government is a better, is a recipe. On my on's men's, the car after speak. And they do it up here, the stadium, very good, I thank you.
I thank you, sir. Your time starts now.
I'm a student. I'm a player. I'm a parliament. I'm a man to go. What a time. The dead can even farm. The dead can give me a farmer, Sakasa. I think we've been in this process for the past 23 years. And I would like to convey a message, starting with the parliamentary. I think you sitting there. We are aware that there was a slack process. Program. Failed us. There was a error pro program. Failed us. There is now a plus program. That is putting us in uncertainty. I think if you had enough time. In the car, there are plus minus only. 25 farms. That are under the name of the previous land. Now you compare that number with the number of farms owned by the commercial farm, fa, farmers. There are farmers who are sitting here. Who owning farms that are bigger than this town is the for worse in the whole. We've been in the, I've been in this process luckily. I'm also a person of the DRC. I told the farmers that, the commercial farmers. If you have room to wait. For the government to come. Do this process, it will never happen, it will never happen. We need your buy in this process. Because you've been benefiting all along. So what are you giving back? You can't wait and sit and blame only to the, blame the garden. So thank you. For taking that decision, if ever to say that. You are going to amend the constitution. So that section should be amended as in yesterday. We start with those farmers who are owning plus minus 20 farms here in the central car. We are sure that there are those farmers. There even people. Who are not here speaking. They are in big towns, some overseas. We start by expropriating those farms. We are sitting, we are sitting on farms. Where we've been. Put as groups families. I think you, you should, please. Make it, make it, take your time. And take the financial statements, statements of those farms. Never. Never will we be able to see where we are. Because we are suffocating. So we are saying. Each farm, each farmer. Must have a viable, an economic viable farm. In order for us to see.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, sir, thank you and your committee, um. I'm Andre Murray, I also serve on the District Land Committee. With William. He's the chairman, I'm vice chairman. Um. I'm, I'm, I serve the on behalf of Africa. And, uh. Agri Western type sent in a, uh, uh. Uh, whatever you call it to the parliament early on, we support that. Most of the problems and, and solutions are in this, uh, uh, submission they send in. It could be, I, and I trust, and I really hope that you people will read that. Because it makes a lot of sense to us, commercial farming here. We support. Land reform totally. We've been working on it since 2003. We've been having meetings, we're now part of the District Land Committee. We don't support changing the constitution, we feel it is sufficient. It, it can work. There's, there's a lot of different opinions about the interpretation of the constitution. And possibly that must be sorted out. Test it, I know that even in parliament, even, uh, the minister of, of land reform has said. Possibly we must get a case going, hit the constitutional report, give us finality, we know what we're talking about. Because there is, there's certain, there's different interpretations. But we feel that it shouldn't be, it's going to do too much damage. And we don't want to ruin this country. We want. People to have land, the landers people must share the land, there's no doubt about it. We're a hundred percent, but we must do it in a civilized. Uh, manner that doesn't ruin anything. The country must succeed, because even if you put people on a small piece of ground, they're going to need financial help. And if the economy collapses or whatever, it goes back. There's going to be no money to help these people, what about the grass? Chairman, we, we on the, on the District Land Committee in the last three and a half years, we've been offered. Close to 70 farms to buy for land reform. The reasons they didn't buy. Are, are different. We didn't buy one farm, we haven't bought one farm. In both it was in the central caroo in the last three and a half years. I believe that there, there's no political war. The, it's not money, I mean, there's lots of money in this country. We, we, your committees have been doing investigations. We see what's happening to the money in this country. If half of that money was given to, to, for land reform. That has been, whatever's happened to it, I'm not accusing anybody. We wouldn't be standing here today if the land reform policies had been successful. We wouldn't be standing here. Most of these people would be on farms and, and be happy. The chairman, that's just, and, and, and this, the facts, the figures and the, and the surveys that are done. They all differ, everybody has their own opinion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm very glad for the parliament. Here in the online, I say that. Years before, I need two stores and also here for the parliament. Kicker is that, but for this parliament, it's not see the slap, not in van the line. And our porters go to the top. Or this is a wacker parliament. I pray. Namens myself. A kind of a caro. I can see the scene of a man. What's a level on the work it in the caro stone. For every cent what I beset. I can see the client of a man. What on the donkey car key. After this trash cup. So you can't miss the song. I can't see. Hey, I've got a ground. But you have been man to steal. Neither my group, or my opa, or my pa, or itself. It's a hand on the level of a brain. Or a smart man. Gislaine. I can see him running out. This what I've for that beset. It's I in my vorgeslag. Op a bitter miner be come. As one of the two monthly year. As here the process must forthgang, the why is it going from article 25 of the ground weight? And that what I may and my men's be worth. By on's gefat word. Can also of on's goodies oppack, so they rest from the blanket, the schavings of Africa. There were you that.
Uh-uh, uh-uh, pray with me, pa.
On's can verdoin and beris. And here you have to. The other option is. That the clom bonger and workloose men's. Uteinlik verander. And a clom vermonkte. Be blue the men's. On's can't wegestap. Sooner or later.
Uh-uh, uh-uh. Uh-uh, uh-uh, uh-uh. Thank you, madam. Thank you.
Hello.
Your time starts now.
Commenter.
I warned you. Before you start, sir. I warned you. There are things that are going to be said that you don't like. Because you also say things that others don't like. Allow them to say what they need to say. They've got three minutes to say it. Your time starts now, sir.
Good day, commenter, um, see as rain or. I'm a commercial boy in the Nelsport area. Um, I can't see for the verandering of the ground weight. Of the weight. 25, no. Um, I will not a pair, another goodies out clear. By a of the ground that by a men's see. What call they, what, they don't, no one to boor me. This word go boor. Here the ground in the caro. Is not by a frig bar me. You 30 hectare nodig on one beers and to. The 60 ragby field. I can't see how the men's that we're me. With another word. You have a red like a stick ground nodig. On one man's on the gang to. This is so makelik. Om net the ground to fat in a klein stikies to go and opdeel me. As on's will pray to the economical free. What the E F F graag will he. And on's for the B B P of South Africa. And on's deal that. van Zuid-Afrika, en ons deel dit, die of vijfen vijftig miljoen mensen, dan gaan elk keer zesduizend vijfhonderd rand de maand krijg, amel in die vertrek, amel in die land gaan zesduizend vijfhonderd rand krijg voor die volgende jaar. En dan is al die industrieën, al die bezigheden, al die werken tot niet. Dan lijt amel honger. Die ander deel van die zaak is, als hier die wet verander word, betekende dat amel helle grond kan verloren. Een sleitende, die tanie van Prince Albert, wat nou hopelik in op mij sit, zij kan dalt nog dit ook verloren, als hier die wet verander. Want dit is wat hier die wet betekent. Ik wil net heer die mensen hoe dit weet. Dit ga nie net word plaatsen nie, dit ga oor eiendom. Dit betekent ons kan amel ons eiendom verloren, alles. Danki.
Bye, danki. All right. Now that we know the process, let me remind you, one person, one three minutes. So if you've spoken, you can't speak again. Take a chance and come to the mic and we'll embarrass you. If you've spoken, you can't speak again. Can we have hands from this side, who wants to speak? You, sir. You, sir, come to the mic. Right at the back, yes. Yes, ma? Yes, ma? The white, yes, yes. 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 Let me take you, sir. If you've spoken this morning, you can't speak again. You, sir. Look at me, otherwise how you gonna know I'm waiting here? At the back, yes, sir. And then you, ma. All right, can we have an indication on this side? If you don't want to talk, you close shop and you go home. Let's take you, sir. Yes, the one at the blue, no, no, yes, yes. Right at the back, ma, with the white, yes, yes, yes. At the back with the green, with the green, you, yes, and behind you, and behind you. And then one, two, three, four, all of it. Let's take you with the glasses, sir. You, yes, sir. Right at the back, yes, yes, with the stripes, yes, sir, you. Yellow cap. Let me take you, sir. And then one, two, three, four. And yes, the two of you there, those two there. And you'll be the last one, sir. All right, uh, let's start this side, you started that side. Just not always sit there, stand where you are, but you have to start with you, sir. Your three minutes starts now.
Goeiemorgen. Kommeritje, paai danki voor de geleendheid. Ik is sit nee wil sket, ik is van merewel. Kommeritje, ik wil begin dieter say dat die grondwet moet verander. Ik wil herhal dat ik say de grondwet moet verander, zodat ons kan, die verleden, se ongeruimde, goed wat er eigen gelopen is, zodat ons dat kan rechsteden. Ik het gehoor dat, dat, uh, als die grond zo gegeven word verander, dat, dan kan ons nie boer nie. Ik wil vanmorgen je say de stabu, ons kan boeren, ik ga de voorbeeld geef van af merewel waarvan ik kom. Ik is nou net zo uur veertacht, toe ik mijn verstand kreeg toe, is daar, een groot man wat boer op een plaats, die boer sit in series, se cooperatie. Haai man net na dertig jaar het hij nou afgetred, hij om hij sedasse. Hoer was het die boeren series? Us kan boer. Is een vo, is een voorbeeld daar. Us kan boer, zoos moe nie voor ons laat vertel, us, us kan nie boer. Kommeritje, ik word, akkerie voor hem wil nou, he die, helle kom nou naar voorne nou. Helle wil nou, ik, ik use height, ik use height. Hoe kom nou? Mijn vraag is, aan die, aan die wit commerciële boeren, wat die helle terreggeer, voor die mensen wat werk bij helle? Hoeveel van helle wat vandaag je set? Heet al. Voor alle werkers, aandelen was gemaan, net na al die jaren. Hoeveel van helle? Zo ik say, ik, ik is, ik is vir die grondwet moet verander word. Ik wil als sleut met die, dat wanneer dit kom bij, die ontwikkeling van ons, als ander klirig is, dan is die wit mensen niet te vinden voeren. Maar is ons wat werk op dat plaats. Is ons wat werk op dat plaats, is ons wat dat kan gas, be man, of werk. Zo ik is, ik is vir die veranderen van die grondwet. I thank you, kommeritje.
Thank you, sir.
Danki, mijn naam is Wijkel. Ik kom al die paar van de lijs door vast, en ik is hier nie die beganser het die grondwet op verander. Mijn achtergrond is, ik besteed twee BI-plaasen. En ik haai huid word BI-plaas, en ik is nie BI-boer nie, ik is een commerciële boer. Ik produceer, of os plas produceer appels en perefe uitvoer naar andere landen toe. En mijn standpunt rondom dit is, voor die, die gouvernement, die, die, die grond willen ondernemen, moet helle eerste lees en orde krijgen. Ik is bewust van paai boeren wat in die westeraf is, wat nog sits het met lijs en grimaans. Hoe kan helle grond ondernemen, maar dat is wat is helle mensen, wat die titel acte zet op helle hie plaatsen? Dit is nie anvaardbaar. Mensen moet titel acte zet, en dan moet die lijs en grimaans weer zet. Die tweede ding is, die perceptie dat als je grond die gaan rijt word, dit is een keer. Als je plaatset, dan moet geberf word op die plaats. Nie jener geau, wat ie is, kan boeren, dat, dat is je manier, nie alma, nie alma kan boeren. En mensen moet dit in helle koppen in krijgen. Mensen denk dat is helle grond, dat gaan nie rijt word. Die word die rijt als je net grond deed die. Om de boer kost geld. Die government moet helle helpen, met die geld ook. Als je één hectare appels produceer kost het honderdendertig duizend rand per hectare om één hectare appels te, te produceer. En dit is goed waarvan die government die praat, helle say ons moet, ons moet grond ondernemen, maar daar wordt nie gepraat over de kosten zie. Die tweede ding is, die laatste ding wat ik nu wil say is, is ik wil, ik wens alle mensen stevend toe, dit droog, is moeilijk hier in die omgeving. Die drucht dat was kwaad gedaan voor lijs door, maar ik wens allemaal stevend toe. Danki.
Danki, meneer.
Goeiemorgen, ik is een jongen van Huien, daar van de kant van Frans Albert. Ja, dat, ekstrem voor die wisseling van article a vijfentwintig, die reden daarvoor dat, een vraag, ons staan voor een titel leer, is, is, is die voestelsysteem binnen in die land is het democratisch. En ik kom tot de antwoord waar ik say dat dit is nie, het democratische voestelsysteem, wat hier binnen in die land, die, als we vol van, dat, voor al brain, zwart boeren, helle die grond waar helle kan boeren. Voor al ik, 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 ik van jongs af, op die plaats goed word, ik is liever die plaats even grond, maar ik heb die grond, ik, 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 voorbeeld, dat ik, ik, ik won op een, vanaf twintig dertien, daar op Frans Albert samen met parken, skapen gehad, skapen gehad, ik, ik, nou die dag, ze boog me, waar mijn skapen gelopen, dat ik moet van mijn skapen ons slagen, want het, want het is droog, maar zijn skapen loop daar. En ik moet nu skapen, moest ik maar verkopen. Zo jener ander wit, specifiek boer, vanaf twintig dertien, moet parken beginnen boeren, en dit, dan zou hij nou al baai verder gebeuren, wat ik nooit geluk is. Die reden is, hoe komt ik say dat, dat grond moet rechtmatek gebedeel word, is dat witboeren het groot landerheen om productie te kan aanplant, helle massive machineryen om helle producten te kan oes, helle die pastworden, en ons als brainboeren moet op een klein stuk grond een leverpapier maken, ons moet met die, samen nie virk, moet ons maar onze grond ondolbe, ons moet onderop woont staan, om onze producten te gaan verkopen, waar ons op de einde van die dag nie winst gaan maken. En dit is een voorbeeld. Ik, 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 ik wil nie mannetro say dat grond wat daarley wordt gebrik. Op Frans Albert is een plaats waar ik goed geworden, dat daar met paale gewerkt, daar plaats leeg, daar, daar man boer nie op dat grond nie, maar hij wil het is keer, aan diegene wat wil dat boer nie. Zo ik say, gaan van daar plaats, van daar zou daar man gebrik in daar grond nie. Op plaats toom is, is een boer, wat daar klo, daar, daar wit man is veel meer groot geraakt, ik het gewerkt op dat plaats, ik heb wat ze waren werk.
Danki, pa.
Daar plaats, is fijt plaats.
Danki, pa. Your time starts now.
My name is Elise Petours. I come from Ljukamka, I'm almost two years there. My view is that section twenty-five have to be amended. The reason for that would be nineteen June nineteen thirteen cannot be the deadline to say only the people after nineteen thirteen will get land from the government. Whether it is the fifteen thousand rand that we get, that is worthless, absolutely worthless to our people. Then we have Hendrik Favur. Nineteen twelf, the National Party, the sins of the National Party, but before nineteen twelve, we had the British Government. And the British Government stripped South Africa from all its gold that it had. They had reserves for years to keep the British community afloat. This section twenty-five have got to be amended, so that the British Government can pay compensation to the black communities of South Africa. To the white farmers who are present here, for you to say that you haven't been compensated after nineteen twelve by Hendrik Favur. Please, people, let's be honest. I come from Ljukamka, and I'm here by grace, because the EFF brought a few people here. The rest of the people don't even know of this meeting that is taking place here. Now let's go to Hendrik Favur and his forced removal. In the nineteen seventies, as early as nineteen seventy-four, nineteen seventy-five, my grandmother brought my father, who is now almost eighty years old, from Craddock, displaced from Craddock, ran with her four children, ended up Prince Albert, then she went to Great Fontaine, a few kilometers from Ljukamka, which is seventy kilometers from Bofort West. In nineteen seventy-four, seventy-five, my grandmother was forcibly removed from Great Fontaine, where you could see the M1, and placed behind that mountain, bitter water in Ljukamka. I'm almost two years now in Ljukamka, and it's tough there, born in Cape Town, tough to come say my grandmother live here, and I also need to be part of this community.
Your time has expired.
Please, people, let us.
Your time has expired.
Ja, police, tuum miriam taglas, tulapepo Fote West, tiki plas lasse, eronaga. Kin en trungwe nze nayo, si, ti se plasin, kota si laua ngama po. Go, ku indwe nbedayo, classifica paya, na lo upetaio pas ambeka pay plasin ibala, na lo liketo ama namapu. Upa guenzwa izinto pay plasin askeleluwa, si dele si esfike kukabantu basuku ama alfaana ba trebi kusha, si buze, nifumanapi pemishino guenza izinto ngapandi kueti, kutuha ai mas ngasteti. Kwasuka lo mpuuli bala pay plasin, was nize la mapoliisa, sa shali swa pansi, afika mapoliisa, nemre lesin, pi, kota tinasi so uto uto yep plasin, sata sisa ama to to in, si ze, um plas leto, kuba niya trebané kusha, niya tumelu boya, aniskeleli, ne uto yonge nze kape plasin, as yes, classifica pay plasin kutuha si banins, as no za songe plasin. Si ti uwe uchulme ntesneke yep plas kanti ni na vo, niya zenze la yep plasin leto. Kwasuka kota singo kafi, kota puma ni pele apa, kapa kueti, tati amko in nowhere, sa sala apa, nyanza, no to nfuni nyaza. Sa tuwa ngawa, kavantu ana babata ka va pay plasin, kukaba zalana yo, kapa kueti, usuka ebona benze kulo, pas pale bonki benza lo, mesele nzu bootoa, ti buze ke mna kavantu ana betu na timos, na kavantu ana, paya kuazu kuuso, mesele nza yep plasin, baso snetisa, kutuha ai, kutuha kaama va paya, si felu kulo mtrungu apepo Fote West, ja bulela mbokfika kwenu, ja buleli EFF untramke, kutara skala akom tu sabelayo, si banga taza si ti snen trungu, si siye kwestube, kuga di kom tu, ozo ostrelba, itini gre night noko. Go, ku na mshange ti zngamile, otata baninsa besuele kile, abaya azine nto yep kubekleyo va babupa, no wam umieni naya se bamta la ngoko, naya usa ubupa mshambi enga kanga ize nto yakia se plasin. Inle, yu pokos ako, kota nas puma ne pokos etu, ba masi sistengi, so paya si, si shali se makai, na zenze amri paya tinam, anandaw, si felu oshobo apa, and ya zke, sa inu guan jani, imvumwe bambaslinama plas kati sa petu ama po. Ba li pulu eli gisuka ekapa, and ju, donwana netu nisika, malaliso ulaula apa, la ukabali ambe, li puyeliso utati mani, kidi ambe, as fumanemiks, no boboyas, bas ma puten swa, njali kuska kutuha, ubegue paye kota, no report kutu na anzi mani. As yes, ne penki, bas na antoni, kuya teni swa, guenza yonge nto kuela plasin, akuzua kuti.
Of course, ma.
Of course.
Thank you very much, Chairperson, with the committee. Dumkululi, alwa. I'm a leader of the ANC. I'm a leader of the ANC. I'm with section twenty-five. Chairperson, I think firstly, let me just put this very straight. This process, it must be not a process that must be politicized. It's a process of a It's a process of a society in South Africa. And I think, to move further, Chairperson, there's a gentleman that raises an issue of, around the issue of, 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 of the Freedom Charter. And, and saying that we are failing the Freedom Charter. And I think in this platform, when we, when we discuss the issue of Freedom Charter, we must then say, all those who work into the land must benefit in the land. And secondly, then goes to say that all those, anyone in South Africa have a right to occupy any land where they want to, that we must then put in front of us. But the very sad part where we are standing, I think this debate need, this, 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 this issue need to be debated. And then we must debate it very, 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 because you, 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 you'll hear us in three minutes and after then you leave. And I think we need to debate this issue. And I think the problem that we are having here is that there's a, there's a white guy that says that they will defend their land. And I think there's always, every time, there's, 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 there's people that are saying that they will defend their land. For us, where we are sitting as young people, we are saying, if you defend your land, we'll take our land back. Because of, every time you raise an issue of Zimbabwe, 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 if you don't come to the party, it will become Zimbabwe. Because of you protecting your land, it is a problem. I think for us, I think for us, it must be then say that we are supporting the section twenty-five to be amended. And secondly, I think the white people must come to the party. If not, then it will be a problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Goeja madam einmal. Evolnet kom ze, dat, da api plas akut swampos Albert. Mene namis pidankman. Evolnet ze, dat, dat blanke man blei, dat is my beer man. Ma ei blei slageister, om ekamstel anis kapasapaitis, eke noal fi slageister. En am trekki netseka groot schoenen aan. Da de lik dishe ei ni, ma ek bete ze ei, enze to be a mane. Ken evolnet ze, da is nog so, baye, en min, van ons blanke mensen, wat samen jou werk, ma dan sa klom, wat sozei ei is. Een groot man met een kinu kop. Dank je mene.
Must section twenty-five of the constitution be amended? Answer the question.
Ja, ja, artikel vijfentwintig van de grondwet moet veranderen woord. Ek is een boer, ek is een klein boer. Ek is jaan boerstander, ek is wat Merwe will, ek boe die ka roe. Die ka roe, het baye grond, oor genoeg. Maar ons wat opkomende boeren klein boeren is, ons is aan die genade van die jero oor geladen. Ons moet boer op meent grond. Als die bij voorbeeld vat, die zal zien sozei liensburg toegaan, sozei kaart toegaan. Als die deer liensbargree, dan moet die baye verzachtig wees, moet niet of verlagre als die liensburg binnagaan. Waan? Liensburg is opkomende boer. Se deer moet lang die en tweer loopwa, die karre helle doordrein. Waan da is die grondie. Ons het baye man ons een merwe will, het driedzehde hectare grond. Maar ons is amper zestig boeren. Levende hebben, varke, bokke, schapen, en grond te teinen. Ons moet allemaal op driedzehde hectare grond boe. Hoeveel grond dat jalka boer? Is nou lamte, is lamte nou. Als jou deer lam, nou is die blij, want jou deer raak meer, die raak een groot, die raak een boer. Zij mag hi meer als team deer anau nie. So wat betekent dat als jou deer lam? Dan moet jij al die deer wat meer als team is, als die schapen, bokke, varke, samboe, allemaal sam, mag net team wees. So ala anders wat meer als team is, die moet het doetmaak. Waan ze het die grondie. Om ons wat het die meent grond boe, baye van ons mensen is doet. Ne, helle droom van grond. Zij koop bij deer die oye sakke. Zij maar die deer, somera seina, alles van die deer moet zij die oye sakke doen. Was keni die help van die staat afnie, die gaafman die haabu boosie. Meneer, die seeste van alles is, zij denkt zij kan nou meer grond krijgen, gaan zij naar die staat doen. Dan word zij die plas boe van die karroer. Helle ze, helle wil die deelnemen aan die regeringse grondhervormsprocesie. Waan dat vat te lang. Als jij als anders kleren gaan naar grondzaken beginnen, en die boer word, die regering moet jou help om die plas te bekomen, grond te bekomen. Dan increase helle die marktwaarde van helle grond. Zodat ons anders kleren dat niet kan bekomen. Dan verkopen helle die grond aan een consortium. En kip wat gebier in die karroer. If you drive from Beaufort West to Merwe will, along the gravel road, it's almost a hundred and forty kilometers. Almost, from Beaufort West up to Merwe will, they used to farm with sheep. The farmer sold the farm to a consortium in Pretoria. They are now the manager on the farm. And they are removing sheep, putting big animals, destroying the land. When we get the land, there will be no land.
Thank you, sir.
Bolweni, bolweni, sir.
Yes, Papa.
Nando mchaba fullotin. If you ile nam kledas, ipogo sa ngos, ndina apa, chemo seyatin, nam slambi de ngoko. Kobaba na laapa go, disvali leksasa, because do na nando go lusa, anamchaba. Ah, velungu gota, gota, abana, abana ossisi, matot. Gokka la, lumbel, lumbte toha, bantit mopege, mopegnio tokmopegn. Goka nineteen twelve, nineteen thirty, bafina benz, mte towen do, wasasket. Akok boko sa mapulis bantja, wasasket, kobaji boko zetu. Si la bantja li boko pa, nesos kula ni mare, skakap mare, spanke. So, namte tomopegnio tokmo man, yo na donze ite da kamera. Mapunuwa was tolele, ma basi kumchawa otuka, ngos.
Of course, good.
Eh, ja. Eh, voorzitter, Bellemtron, Bellemtron van Liensburg. Ek is een boer na, ek is lid van die landbouwvereniging. Ik reken dat die heidige klesiele in die grondwet, artikel vijfentwintig, is voldande om grondhervorming aan te spreken. Die grond waar ik boe, het mij voor geslaakte in achttien drieëndveertig commercieel begonnen boer. So op die grond is ons nou honderd vijfëventige jaar. Ik, als inspreker het je genoemd, da is vijf van, vijf vijftig miljoen mensen in Zuid-Afrika. Als ons vat vijf miljoen is wit, dan is da vijf, vijf, vijftig miljoen zwart mensen. Da is op die omelijk drieëndveertig duizend commerciële wit en zwart boeren is Zuid-Afrika. Da was op een stadium tweehonderdduizend geweest. Komme se da is dan over jargament tweehonderdduizend plaatsen. En ons vat die zwart mensen wat vijftig miljoen is en twannen miljoen is, is volwassen, wat grond kan opnemen. En ons vat ei tweehonderdduizend plaatsen, en ons gede verzwart mensen, dan gaan na nog zes ninntien miljoen aghonderduizend mensen weer zonder grond. Zuid-Afrika is een landbouw, alberon arm land. Ons het minwater, ons het nie goeie grond, en or andere delen van die wairrood nie. So die boeren moet effectief wees om hier die land van voedsel te voorzien. So ik denk die heidige klesiele maarvoorziening genoegzaam voor grondhervorming, en dat hij moet recht toegepast worden. Hij is geslouwd die afgelopen drieëndtwannach jaar. En als is om recht toe pas, kan ons die grondhervorming doen dakom bij onder de plaatsen elke jaren in mark. Die landbouw is ook gewillig om betrokken te raken bij grondhervorming in de opleiding van nieuwe boeren.
Oh, thank you.
Engos simshali ngapambili, nabakpashi layo, mnan di ngutani leka J. Kobs. Mnan di ti u section twenty-five, ma kachinchoe. Okues bi ni, di ti kani jongile, kui abantu abashendi nezinto apa, kui tolopi leni shala kuyo. Kali kenak kuisi stalato salapa itolopi. We ay bonu ba mtomshope kupena, opeteyo tolopi, sonki zakyo se zabo. Si pinde, kinasbene ngakiyo ba, ka u jongile, upulhis oluitu, oluitu pulhis olukala anye. Na ngoko si sayenza, indwe ba mtomnyama angati banil mtomshope. We ilondo bez bona bona, bengati ba pizlu kunati. Kobaba ga no ku klasi sitis yokha kaysenza, upulhis, si li ba tataba duzba fake koni neti ine. Upinde ka upinde shala pansu jonge, ufuma ni so ba, imishaba lisbanika ya bandi kisin kesebo ke la zona. Ngomshaba na njeo ba ma kashalepa, ka eno kti, abenensi ibazu ba ma kakule, akwa zu ik kulisai in da ole ashala kuyo. Zingaki sinazo ezu, ndiabulelo kobaba ma kutu ka kusha li pansi, nyay local government ezizi, kuzi kelelu ba, ma kutinje ihetas rezozza bandu, iu kwenze, lumishaba ya bandi bengi ikulu na, bo apa go ke la konan, go kulumende. Kobaba lo, e okkebele, mnan di ngomnyenomnye, si afuna imishaba na, tuwa ka apa itolopi. Di ken da yo funa omshaba apa ko maspaala. Yo kindau ba ngafuna omshaba, kutuha ai lo omshaba, ba bizap, kutuhi mienn grondan, diazke indwe onde. Korage batabai ngati indwe yer, eduka anye, indwe nisinde zinshalo. So, di ti ngamanyamazu, ma kutinje i constitution, kwenze lo ba, sonke, abantu ba ikonu lo ba, ndiema si, si ti i economy ye lizwe, isa kusha, akon diinshalo. Class nova sonke si be nganye ye economy, i, i, noto ituza u nyuka, uza u kupuka, kuneme ko kuyo ngoko, engos.
Of course, good.
Eh, ki polis agikome ti, di ngungfama, di fama apa, ukifama, yenguenganga apa, diazto ba ifama inyanla, antoka inyeli kamese. Okokala ba nvu menam di ti section twenty-five ma kamen doe. Eh, kobaba ama bulu, aseli misaba nemi ikulu. Kunama bulu alapepo fot west, oka ni central Karu. Anemi shaba eke wine lens. Apa axie ifomen zabo apa, esbas iranela, ma fama anga ko productive. Bonabasheli kla ma fama a productive, e wine asse ke wine lens. Kube ko ama fama aseli elanda nasse New York. Anga ngo wa laapa. Waile abantu ba laapa, besoko la umshaba, bengi namshaba. Ke petelepa la ma fama amshopi aseli New York nasse elanda, ba ka ma fama asse ma moosko, no ma kupa, amazu ai ne da tina, uguluera edilizwe. Eh, ya bona ngoko, ake ko basheli paye tunswana laabo, ba under minor even, le, le, le processieru, ake ko apa bizi apa, kunda utok se show ground, apa bizi pang e ochsi. Because pa delela kuwa le process, the ANC layo ba e delela, ba ti akon bezakwenze kapoma, na ngomshaba wetuza utatu. Mas nova si anga pa, si anikela committee, si funa umshaba wetu kauleze ubuye, not after another twenty-six years. So funa umshaba wetu kauleze, ubuye lekuti pam kokba sense, okwa se zimbambue. Si za utatu ba ngaba ni as libazisa. En si ayazi ANC inaayo i process, yo kinkela yo libazisa. En enyindo esbi ni, si ne te ni ma comrade, eh EFF, ne zani ANC ni chinche i constitution. Si ayazi ANC in need a two test majority for to chinche i constitution. Aba na i two test majority, ba ni ngakuazu itualisa, ne EFF, bayeke la ngolo keza pa, ba va sedenza, bantu mapegue pambe. Of course.
Thank you. Your time starts now, sir.
Voorzitter, baydanki für die gelente. Section twenty-five must be amended. Ik wil graag mijn stelling als poormotiveer. Voorzitter, nie alles wat rech is, is altijd zo rech zo waar het lik nie. En nie alles wat goed lik, is altijd zo goed als waar het lik nie. Evolnet graag voor i so verdeelik, toe aparte in die wetboek geschreven staan, toe er het rech lik, en toe het goed gelik. En na nee tien vierëndveertig, toe is het nie meer goed nie, toe is het ook nie meer rech nie, dankzij dat amadibe. We ja, madiba. En net zo, voorzitter, is het net zo een leen dat net African mans in soccerspanne kan spelen, en net witmans in die springboxpanne kan spelen. En net zo onwaar is dit, dat net wit mensen kan boe. Want zo wordt daar vergloed dat als brijn mensen boe, dan gaan na hungers noodwees. En dit is een leen uit die bek van die jal. Voorzitter, dit is net zo ongelooflijk onwaar, dat zo baye grond aan een sekere groep mensen boe. Dit is net zo onwaar dat één ou drie tot vier plaatsen kan besit, terwijl ander heil oor grond om te boe omdat ei of sei die kennis heet. Kleinboeren boe net voor die pot. Hij maak hi giat nie, hij ga nie voor hem doen nie. Laten hij zijn kiddy uitbreken om ook grond te besit, en daar te boe met zijn kennis om in die voedselketing te komen. Voorzitter, evolven i bemoeide in zeven dag, hou aan met hieri goeie werk. I en hieri goeie werk is togevou in die scene in die genade van ons hieri Jesus Christus. Baydanki.
Amen. Your time starts now, sir.
Goeja madag, dumlang. I am against amendment of section twenty-five to allow expropriation of land without compensation. En de reden ook maket ze is dat ik voel daar gaan na econoomische catastrofe verozaak, en dit kan elk een voedseltekort verozaak. En ik vol net ook voor die voordegespreker ze, alle mensen kan boe, dit ga nie oor ethische groep of je klier nie, dit ga oor die liefde en die kennis wat je heet, zo allemaal kan boe. Maar ons kan niet toelaat dat eindomane weggevat wordt nie, en zonder iemand aanstede aan gaanie. Ik stel is ten welzaam dat grondhervorming moet gebeuren. Daar had verkeerdegoed gebeuren en verleren van allemaal, en dit moet rech stel worden. Maar ons kan niet toelaat dat section vijfentwintig verander woord, en onteining toelaat zonder vergoeding nie. Baydanki.
Thanks, very thanki.
Molweni.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. Goeja madag. I'm Patrick, living in the central Karu. Um, section twenty-five must be amended. My simple and straightforward reasons is showed in our history. Sixteen fifty-two, trees keeper, the olive farm, the reicher, and the dromedaras. When those three sheeps arrived, our people, the so-called Koi San Claus Amguni people, were living in a very peaceful habitat. I don't believe I know. Everything was in abundance. We showed nothing. They raped, they robbed, they maimed, they killed. It all started at a key point. And a couple of years after, they went along the coast, eighteen hundred and twenty to be specific, another group were robbed, remmed, and maimed. And later on, they went on. But that's not the crux of the matter, see? The crux of the matter is, the hungry must be fed, age protected, and infants cared for. How do we do that? We need our land back. Like I said in the beginning, I don't believe, I know that these things can happen. And on the one hand, sixteen twenty-five komali, ons het afs, now all of a sudden, a lot of. They give us the Bible. They give us the Bible and they took the land. So give back their Bible and take the land. I mean, it's obvious, it's clear. Noble mensen for on say. And when you say brain and swat mensen, because of that term doesn't exist, swat mensen kan i boer. While when they came here, they told no mause and the prosa people, burning your fields, kill your animals. And then after something very special and wonderful will happen, that never happened. So please, our people, come to your senses and believe in yourself. Nobody will come and give you land from heaven or anywhere, not even your Christ. See? Kreye la rech swat mensen, although opa mila serf de verdeel, you know? The cause of the main thing is this brain and swat thing. Whereas white people remains white, whether he is poor, whether he is a Christian, non-Christian or what. Please, people, unity is strength. Let us unify and push this agenda. Section twenty five must be amended. Amandza.
Your time has expired, sir. Yes, sir.
Goei madag kabinet, likabin aakme, ook goed. Erstens wil ik di ting bring, jammer, meneer Vorzeter. Lek mi tacht percent verstan engels en toontage ni. Ik denk van is groot mensen i so. Tu meneer Vorzeter di vorlegange lees was het engels, ik denk bayt met opgekom. En meneer kom praatma, die verstaan, en ik war daar die papier gezet ni. Ik gaan as i me voer laat om vetter de praat. Die gedachte wat ik bring is, ik hoor i baye goed i so, more verkracht en klomgoed. En ik denk en ontaining van gronde, wat nogal duh artseert nogal is. Erstens denk ik dat Bofort West is geleer op i en ik denk, als dank misschin an toekomst kan onzi, misschin apesegit Bofort West to bring, om armutabiti terlag misschin so werkskiping. Abrenge pesegit waare hunderde mensen kan werke, maar ilem sit en kee, hoe kan os Bofort West accomodieren om werke kan skipai kan asgevold van armutte? Maar denk wat ik wil praat is, or enning van gronde. Die seer is ik denk os kan ni di boer van i grondaf net weggoe ni. Ik denk ei si au wat an shop ride. Se 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 iska sazogta afles, rakka volgepakas. Ik gloo ik boer is i ein wat glood dat een jet en kleres dottensport was, dat kleres ekani. So ik denk als os skipna dat, os kost sit met da planze man, hoe kan os di mensen ja oki? Hi om pit pompeze tien plazen. Maar ei drie kinders kom os skip, kom os skipna, hoe kan os om yal as a boer? Eh, ei drie kinders kom geven ze elke kinde plas en vom sjal plas, aset a vier plas, nosa sez plas, no fra os. Hoe kan os om help me lego, gaan sez plas, no ga ni terug, eti sevale listi man. Os zien di tien plazen, drie kinders en jis ja, geef jele vier plazen. En ons kee kan os misschin an a sez bekoop ni. Ik maak e voorbeeld. Eh, ik denk om os sit, os werkt met elkaar is gevoelens, os amal is mensen, os amal fout gegamaak en is probeer di fout er rechtsstel is probeer. Eh, man, di sez plas, ein plas, ik maak e, eh, simple voorbeeld. Is groep ein plas, daare tien grand. Eh, ik soek op i waag lies ver plas, waag nou al hiel paar jaar. Wat ik say is, os geef feverin feri feri bas, as al ein komst. Ik krit tien grand feri, os geef feverin feri plas, ek neem i plas oor, maar ek betaal i ander feverin. Eh, ek betaal i ander feverin, maar as ik producti lewe ri, dan julle rech, misze man, meneer jij xing, os jij kan glad ni, productier kom, os jia.
Your time starts now. Yes, sir.
Goei madag, ik is et ni rasta bra. Eh, ik stem geen sins, same di grond wat vat wordt so oni kookis. Wat ik wil vraa is, c is, ons klierlange wordt misbrek. Want as you were na worry di land bewortan i swat mensen, di land bewortan i koi san. So vat is ons endli. Maar ik net moe di voorige spreekers etal as geset wat ik graag ho geset. Di grond i se si afgehandel, ei goed le volstof, ei boer bij jille. Eh, nou bij di grond afva. Denk no bi o in dis, i grootste stik grab. Di pikki mensen, jie, jere geef ala erke na plas, waas i an a grond, daas sali grondwee. Dat is i an seese bliftaktika en biti, that is a secure a last survival for two days in a year. Amen.
Baydanki meneer. Your time starts now, sir.
Uh, greetings to the panel. Um, my name is Neville Van Roy, from the central caru. Yeah, we need to bear in mind that something has happened before this document was, came into being. And that is an injustice process that happened. Um, now you come here as the parliament, you bring the rapist and the victim into one house and you want them to make the same demands for land. I don't agree with that process. I don't agree with that process. Now let me come to the Koi San people. Um, on the calendar of South Africa, we have the twenty fourth of September. It's Heritage Day. Heritage Day. How are we supposed to celebrate this day? How do you expect me to celebrate this day when some white man is sitting on my Koi San engravements? He's sitting with my caves and he's making a profit as he has been for a hundred and five years. Accumulating wealth at my expense with our labor of the farm workers still today. How? How? I, I, I'm not in favor of this, that the state must own the land. The people must own the land. The people must own the land. We give the state the full power to be the facilitator and the implementer of that role. Bring the land to the people. Um, we have skewed power relations here. And we just want you to bring the process together. Eh, en yummels naam. Ien boer kan i vijftien plazen het. En ein ander man het, ein kleinstekje grond ni. Just bring the process together. Try to strike the balance, that is what we saying here. And this is for us an emotional issue. Now, you have the rapist here, we are the victims here, you bring them in the same platform. Uh, let me rather stop there, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, I thank you, my leader. Actually, I'm supporting section twenty five must be amended. And there's a perception that people have, saying that, thinking that our people will fail if they, if they own the land. Who said that they will fail? Why didn't they fail when they took it? There's always a foundation where you must start somewhere as a person. So our people will start when they get the land, they will also start. And who said that the resources won't be there? Stop making money as in always the issue to start something good. If ever they get the land, there also gonna be some laws of maybe resources where they will also, they will also get from government. Financial, it will help them to uplift themselves. And whenever the government have helped, at least the people will have the knowledge to know. And by the way, all these plas, actually that white people are having. If ever you can go there, that guy only goes in the morning to go and monitor the people while our people are working, doing the job. So why not give the person the land? Because it's not as if they don't know how to, what to do with those, with those lands or maybe with those animals, with those sheeps, with those cows. They know exactly how to feed those. There's no white man that is feeding his own animals, that's a lie. That's a lie. Our people are doing a dirty job, but I think they want to see us suffer. They love, they only love the image of poverty in us. That's the, that's the reason why they are against it. And we will never, as it never be intimidated by saying our people will fail. That's a lie.
All right, thank you too. Please organize the mic here. All right, ma.
Thanks, Chaperson. Ebweh la bikia istu brana meitu. I don't want to fly in the sky. As a young little girl, growing up where the now called Madlenkosi is. My grandfather used to have stock. He had livestock. No baby's that need snacks. That was even forget. Onse mensen, nou praat ik van swat. Di ding, you see, os label os meself. Os in South Africa, jij is wit of jij is swat. Ik gave jou in between set, dan ik get sixty one, pa di government gezet, das kaapsa klierlange. Zo is jij reit ticket wil vat, da vat jere. Voor de information for ons wat vandag, hi kom staan en say, we are, by the way, Chaperson, I am for section twenty five to be amended. Our people used to live in Bofort West, which is today the town. Our people were just chucked off. Nobody asked anything. I myself is a product that was chucked out of Madlenkosi, the now called Madlenkosi. A big house, five room house, they put us in a, my mother in a two-room house. My father could not even go with us because he was a king. So as mensen hi vandag was afal me mensen, ik is hi verpartei ni. Os mini parties wil pleesi. Daas hi ein van ons wat hi kan staan en say, niere moege change wordt, dit moet change wordt. You see, Chaperson, ninety-two, I went to the stage to study. And there was this one morning in June, when I saw former Jeremy Crowan with a yes t-shirt. You see, this is where we messed up. We have messed it up to vote yes for change. And now twenty some odd years later, the same people that we accommodated in the yes doesn't want now to say to us, let's share. And that's the mistake that the A N C did. And I was, you know, I got sick and I just abandoned my studies and came back home because I couldn't take it. Why was me, why must we negotiate? But I also understand the bigger picture. Bofort West, if you go to Bertrat, Donkonstrat, Nivestra. You know what we discovered in ninety-five? When the first municipal elections was, that those three streets, all the property in those streets belonged to councilors. And I'm telling you, some of it still up till today. Then people want to come and act here, en os li amal boer, ek ashi a boer. But if I can get a piece of land to build flats and things and housing for my people, I want.
Your time has expired, ma.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you so much. Yes.
Uh, good day, good day, good day comrades. The name is Jakobus and the surname is Johannes, is a name that you must take note of. I just want to read a small, a small piece. Before I read it, you know, since nineteen ninety to ninety-two to nineteen ninety-four, he was thus. I support the amendment of section twenty-nine. He was thus section twenty-nine yet, and he was much more than he is today. They keep us with the interconstitutions so long, eh? This section twenty-five, section twenty-five, eh? Ja, asaiwa, asaiwa to suge bulde alia, this section twenty-five kept us in poverty, kept us always below uh, the loving weights, eh, you see? I just want to read this one, eh? Unfortunately, it is the poorest of the poor farm workers that are in possession of the experience of farming. This is the point I want to make. It is only the monopoly exchange market that makes people that love Afreeca forum think that people will die. Let's face it, our society is in demand for equality. It's not a political thing, we must not make this issue a political issue. It's the society, it's the people at last. We want to be equal, we want to live, we are not living, we are angry. We can't live, you see? And what my closing remarks, I just want to say, for people that knows Juan Rupert and Tony Leon, I just want to say farewell to them. They must go home, take their things and go home and leave us, eh? We have the experience of farming and we won't die. I have brothers in Elson, but they know how to farm, they know how, they studied for mixed farming. We are equipped and we are ready to work our land really. And I'm not a farmer, but I want to say equality is really something that young people. And if people think that, oh, this, this thing is just a political thing, oh, this thing will, the people will take the land. We won't wait for any government to give us approval to take this land, you see? So it is a done game, farewell Tony Leon, farewell Juan Rupert.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, panel. Thank you, Chaperson. All protocol, observe. Uh, I am supporting the section twenty-five. It is too long overdue, too long overdue, really. Then this, these white people are using the Mandela, the Mandela, and it's also our people who are sellouts. They are really sellouts here. You can't be a sellout coming from the struggle background. You can't do that. You're showing that your thinking is very poor. We are want the land because the land belongs to the people. You don't have the problem of private property land, you understand the constitution does protect you the problem. But you can't do nda plas het, euro, you can't ni hunderd plas het. You can no noit, you can, can happen like that. You must share the land, freedom chada set, the wealth of the country shall be well shared among those who work it. The African national congress very clear about that. And I'm very clear about it also too. I am saying it deep in my heart. Jammer, boerkes, jammer, wat ei wat i teet het gekom, en i teet het gekom, en i teet het dag. Di mensen moet kreep wat moet dengi moet kreep. En os ga ni no more werk kreepen, da werk kreepen. As, as woog teet no. And ik is blij dat di paneer li gekom. And ik is blij opdat di, 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 di voorige spreekers say. As gebrek het is a politikal tooli, you know, you see, is a tool. It's the truth. The A N C is very clear in our conference, very clear, jillik ama vaat say. The A N C is very clear in our conference, os support my mani toga, bla bla bla, tip homni. We are supporting it hundred percent, ma boe omxaba, engos.
Engos.
Goei mora. I am Pastor Goodman Tais. I came a few decades ago to Bofort West. If I think back, district six, I come from district six. The same Ulungu, where the group areas act, chased us away, threw us into Hanover Park. Parkut, where I come from. I became a statistic of crime. I became a gangster, leader of the mongroes. But the Lord came my way, he changed me. I'm a pastor now, one of the biggest churches in this town, Bofort West. I'm also the leader of the African National Congress of Bofort West. I want to speak to you, Mr. Chaperson, and delegates of parliament. One thing that you need to really thoroughly watch, and I, my colleagues of the E F F, take note of this one. The land of expropriation, and yes, I support section twenty-five, needs to be amended. When you expropriate, this holy, agrif, oh, what do you call these guys? Afriforen, this political bias, uh, 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 apartheid bias organization called Afriforum. They are working with the banks. When you go there, I'm also a farmer, I have few goats and stuff. When you go there, I'm also a farmer, I have few goats and stuff. When you go there to the banks, Rupert is blocking us there and is blocking you also legally to expropriate this land. So we want you guys even to deal with the banks to expropriate. We don't need permission of these people. They are not the mafia of South Africa. And I want to speak to Afriforum.
No, speak to me.
Through Afriforum. I want to speak through you to Afriforum. It is high treason to go and speak to other countries and break our bad mouth as South African and our government and say that our government cannot govern. What they are, the message that they want to give outside there, that our government has no clue to govern. You must stop with this thing. And those guy, to the chair, there was a guy here that said, ons gaan niet hier lang hier zonder perfectie. Let him come. If, if it comes to that point.
Yeah, at that point, your time expired.
Okay. Greetings, everyone. I support the notion of the land must be expropriated without compensation. Okay, my first point is, our main focus is not only on the farming, but we can also build schools in the black communities because we only have one high school and one primary school. And when you go to the Rastafarian, you find a lot of high school and primary schools. But our land was stolen way before sixteen fifty-two. Because our, our town was named after Henry Beaufort, the guy from England, in eighteen eighteen, right? So, so, and before we even became Africa, we used to be Ethiopia. The whole continent used to be called Ethiopia. But CPO Africanas was the one who conquered Africa. And then the continent was named after him. So from that point, white people have been in this country for a long period of time. But the only focus of history, they are only focusing on sixteen fifty-two, and which is the wrong history that we have been given in school. And that starts today and it has to end from this point on because we need our land back. And our forefathers can't celebrate with us or rejoice with us because they haven't even received their land from way before. And what I also wanted to say is, the Khoisan can't claim that this land is theirs because we, the Bantu people, came from Cameroon. And then we came here and most of our languages, all our cliques, including the Khoisans, they took it also from Tanzania. And then we came to the Southern Africa. And then, and we became the first ones to find the land here in South Africa because we are the ones who are creative enough. That's why you find paintings in Egypt also, in the caves and in all the caves here in Africa. Because we are the ones who are artist. And the Khoisans came after us and then they saw that there are already people here, which is the, the African people, us. And then they moved to Namibia, that's, that's the land they managed to find, not South Africa. Okay, now thank you.
I thank you too, sir.
Thanks to the members of parliament. Ola vuk tetai language la sekaya is tos. Ik am Madame de womzwanel in D'Arangbanis. Mwetegelu. Undipoma, kui Azanian Peoples Liberation Army Military Veterans. Di funa guti, di hundred percenting adisopuli uleliwa. Masen mamelisi sagakli, ogunene, weyafunu lalujwal omtetu. Ogokala utabi lomshaba alukali di ayta di nguekubisantu malab. Especially Yuthman, who knows himself, General Africa Finance Sisters. Diso ta di guti landaba, ik ga de go sixteen fifty-two, in dabei omshaba. En ngangro gu masu mamelisi sagakli, guti tetwa justi omshaba, ngongasiteta. Ngong, ngongshaba, just omshaba, mas tetan omshaba, gesiteta ngendo, epes omshaba, nendisa, epes waow omshaba, nengapansi omshaba. Now si tetan ba, kune property zezi, o niwe yo ape Azania. Esing asba zi, o nwenjali ngamashakusha. Forty-three hundred percent shoba kapula lika zi, kabula wabandu. Mas si tetan omshaba, landaba Finesland, emfa, oguzoma ngoku. Deani, mas si tetan omshaba, siazi, dogba, abanini omshaba, asin, asin gabazzi, doguti, es ama Africa sia alfuni zule tu libuyele guti. Pangama shakusha Fika Africa, sa singabali, omshaba, singabasabinzi, omshaba. Namshanje, sithlezinje, asnanniks. En ogunene, nde, itanda, lenauti weyo, eguti, kuguzize, lalaguzu. Kabafesinyao, si kaluba kelo, akashali tukepuff. Sa fumanisilu ngati poksionmatis. Wi ne, tu ko correcti ndo ezni, inzape Africa, eh, South Africa. Ogunene, sia funa landabi lungis. Mas si tetan omshaba wa, ni kukona, aban, abafishayo, around, ape Azania. Di batate izi, ndoza, se Azania, tunyolo gama nyamasa, ba fumanimalis, fumileyo. Mas si tetan omshaba, si tetan around, amans, nendo yonge, elape Azania. Gunabando, abenza, imali, engapabokonda. Kubukjei bo ganya, kui mineraliza, la pia Azania. Zia, ba, ngabo futa ba ne claim, epes gzo zindo. Mas si tetan obuisola omshaba, mas jonge zonge zi zindo, singa teti just, apo si funa melshaba, nda posrekon. Because in dabei omshaba inzulu, ndiabok, izo liteu.
Niabon, bab.
Ja sbulise, la ku Jefferson, kamalamu kene, adobo kabandu. Zou kumbuza, tamshigazi. Isu tlerinu, dule isu gemshabena, yo nalotafili sheli koyo. Yonke in de lapen shabene resides from omshaba, direct or indirect. So omshaba, fulekubuisela, wabanba. And the terminology here, expropriation, you can only expropriate what is not yours. So we must repossess the land. Thank you, section twenty-five must be amended, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Niabon, bab.
Di womzumkulmatol, di wala panama, pe Beaufort West. Di amram sila, nanupir section twenty-five. Bam, amen, subsection twenty-five. Imba angbandi shojim, skufekini, kumshaba wetu. Asnando snay. Watroso twindo, nengene namshaba, nengene nanju, ayon do, tadeyo. Sia ambas, eh, kui zi liteu. De ibulela, lando omshaba, yakaya pakanyso, ngenyimini, pi isi. Yatin galande, la zonge zi zi zindo, kota maskalo omshaba. Ayaka tanelo, lo, tole. Da gesi melani, ndo yo ba, bo, na aba bandu, baza ba, ni kumshaba. Panele, ndo yo guti, ba ba bueri luwali, ayaka kunzalo. Napakamundano, mmm, EFF, ndiyo. Ya yo, ya yo, pegalo omkrimbo, upegaya, to beke tafle. Unjenjenjen, intimai, pegke pambi, lomkrimbi, amansa, glunda.
Niabon, bab.
Jefferson, nekpeba, jan, please, zunlonga, kochek, newum farmer, ofum, ofu, fu ye, clayline, eh, riponrood. And diso te, nobai farmer, and ya zin donnea, kota, zingum farmer. Di mekunyenaye, u section twenty-five, indoba namaga, change. Omshaba ma ubuyele, ebantwi. Omshaba wa koko bitulu. Ayongo omshaba, wamashakusha. So asiso tata, indo eyeyetu, kufneka, ibuyele kuti. Di mele, oma ma glenda, unji mikuyo. Di mele, ulucha, ulenda, unji mikuyo. De, noba, si, yakwazo, opusisa, omshaba, we ay etwit. Asin noba, omshaba, askwazo, sedenza. Omshaba, utatwe guti, so sedenza. So omshaba wetu, ma ubuyele kuti, en goos.
En goos. Yes, sir.
Amansa. Ik am amurikado, I'm an activist by nature. Eh, dia fuuma, I don't use some tone. I think my t-shirt is already answering the question that we have to expropriate land without compensation. First of all, I would like, I would really like to, 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 to honor the, the young academics of EFF because they brought this motion to the table. Oguti, we have to discuss this now, that we want the land back to us as black people. First of all, also, this is not a research space. For those who think this is a research space, not a research space. It's just to express our views, how we feel about this issue. Secondly, we have to correct the people's ideas of saying or what they, what they think about the other people. I wouldn't like a white person to say our people to us, black people. We're not their people, we are South Africans as a whole. Let us not discriminate each other. Secondly, thirdly, expropriation without compensation must address stute, land ownership in South Africa. First of all, because of now we suffering in the stute patterns of land ownership. And also, by doing that, that must address or influence equality. Because of, just to make an example, I'm a Black South African, who is an invader, who invaded land. But so stupid, invading the land, I'm invading the land at the back of the, of the town, whereby you complete, on your way to the oldies venues, you never saw any shade, especially in the southern Cape. You never saw any shade, you only saw the nice houses on your way up to these places. Because of, we taking land at the back, even if there's, as what the company said, if there's a development, it happens at the back, RDB, it's at the back. But we can't stay in downs because I'd rather stay in down, then I can say we are equal. I can rather have a tavern in down, then I'm equal. Because of this, you can only dive in there, you can't even beat with a car in suburbs. You're making a noise. Where is the equality going to land? That is a land issue also. And I think we need to also address the, what we call the apartheid, especially land patterns because that's, that's the thing that I want, I just said now. Because of a black person, a black person must stay in a corner and the white man is staying right here, right just next to your wake, and I have to, I have to travel, taxi to work, everything. And lastly?
I know lastly.
Okay.
Molue, nemchal kapambi.
Ba.
Ik am Madame Tenzelso Peters, suke Marispe, Xanalkaru, Watwan. Disenjen, gendo kshoba, section twenty-five. Omshaba, weyafuneka. Omshaba, go wetu. Aba, basuka ngape, koma, Europe, asba, zape mzan. So ke, mzan, omshaba, obuele guti, kaza, teti nyaniso. Pagale kale, Marispe, ulongo, ywana, na wa plus, ay five. Si zamutetanabo, abafunus mamel, soliklaesha, gooku. Ukba mastini, masi, umtate, omshaba, asitiiki, sia la ngapambiri. Sebanzera, ganjala, ge, di ngimemba, eh, EFF, Marispe. So, kula mikala, Xanalkaru, omshaba, saufuna, saudina, geke, squazi, another five years, si fuye, es yatini zetu, sin es yat, es ngim. So ke, mzan, dibarana, bantu ba, ba kase, era ba, omshaba, weyafuneka, singa bantu, zape mzan, South Africa. Telga bantu, zuka ngape, ana, na. So, tat, anditiiki, di agapambiri, fifa, omshaba, buye, ma buye, omshaba, fifa. En goos, ma buye, omshaba, en goos, ma.
En goos.
De, ya bulisa, kubongdo, abandaba, koye, ka. Di funa, jo, ukutimna, jo, wongondo, kwa play, we, Emma Reisberg. Emma Reisberg, dizalele paya, nakurela paya. Niti, innene, lomtetu ma ukukule, ngoba, nezi pene, es nins, esibange la, ubambisileke, lendi, ma, yoba, naati, sfuman omshaba, so ma ibekingu, di amsela nanayi. Di cho, pantu, ezi zatu. Ogokada, ya ze, payakukola, omshaba, kutwage, kuka maswala. Oktwaake, ngoa bantu, aban, nato, bangafuya. Koda, kwa kulumshaba, ukuzukonba, ababantu, banen, izo, ezinbi. Omtu xia ifama, yakaya tegisele, kubantu apesaya, ajikazu. Azo, nyakatisaba, kuti, ekropini, kulumshaya, nungu, azo, fuya, pa kunya nati. Akonti, lovenziwa, koya. Ogusbini, ndi, ndi ngatimna, ka, lomshaba, ngokoso, pina, usosulashulo. Ma, ma guti, omtu ofume ne, ani, kweni lungele, lelele, yoba, ube, gekamalaki. Ngoba, kayengeko, gekamalaki, abantu, ifama, ez nins, ez niku, abantu, apa, bashike, bezipisa, kwa kon, kaye bezisuisela, ema pulini, kuva, kakati, kakati, banins, klo farmer, and isipeto, ayio, yabo, kuke, ne, kona, ike, singasisi, pini, sa, kubantu, ba. So ke, omtu, makayu, ni kumshaba, ane, ne lungele, nempia, bezitinko, wa. Ogus tatu, di funa, ukuti, etuna, imba, ba, omtu, ati, asoz, si pulle. Payakwazo, kutwala, mashakusha. Kunzi, manoba, ngoku, ene farmer, esiteng, ukba, ati, kulum, tumsebenza, yayo, apa, ati, ike, fuya, noba, si kushes, nklano, kulenda, wu, imnina. Ayen, ze, kilonda, enda, onogo, ngoku, batate, bonga, abantu, zoa, fago, wavezinyao, ape town, batenga, wavezinyao, kwa, kuesi zi, es, batenga, isayo, batengele, abantu, ba, kuva, besiti, ike, ya bo, na ngoku, ukzuke, na ngoku, u, u, usebenza, omshano, omshaa, sukshawo, na ngoku, sebenza, omshano, omshaa, ausseko, paya farmer, tengele, indu, aben, tengele, uvezinyao, aben, ngoku, la, mto, aganalungu, kwa, pela, kula omshaba. Klokondi, amsone, ndo ba, lomshaba, lomtetu ma ukukule, ukuzufanele, yoba, abantu, ba, nonglanjen, gam, wofuya. Si fuye, ngopelele, yoka, bal, en goos.
En goos. It is, going past two. You either have a choice of taking a fifteen-minute break or we carry on, it's your choice. Who's asking for a fifteen-minute break and who's saying we carry on immediately? Carry on. All right. All right. We're going to carry on, we're going to take the last round of thirty hands. If you've spoken this morning, you can't speak again. We'll start with the young man at the back with the red. Niabon, bab, we are, we are, with the cap, niabon. I'll sit down, the rest of you. Yeah, I know you, bab, you are, na, bab, I come, uh-uh. That one at the back, yeah. And then you can come also. If you've spoken this morning, you can't speak again. If you take a chance, we will embarrass you when you come here. Come with the green cap. Green cap, you with the blue also, it's fine. Yeah, all right, all those with their hands up, come. Let's see how many you are. As long as you haven't spoken this morning. As you for open, for brother, then can you live, brother. Others can come this side, there's two banks, others can come this side. Is there anybody else that wants to speak? Is there anybody else that wants to speak? As long as you haven't spoken this morning, sir, you can come forward. Going, going, gone. All right. This is the last set of speakers. Dit is de laatste set van sprekers. Allegere, Beaufort West hebben ze gezegd. All right. Oké. Zeg, je drie minuten start nu.
Oké, ya bulela kakulu, njala la ve pofo, loofu, kutrela. Inde, inde katasaya, yo yo, wangane, nditetwaya apa, kuba, hallo section twenty-five, mama amended, for, for benefit abantu, abantu, ndikle, kuma plas. Abantu, we bezit ingo, nineteen ninety-four, ukotuka, kwa South Africa, itato banduini, katrima, balilise, lobusi, nebisi, kwabanjes, sinalapa, nanamkata, sikrima, kuba, nanende la ma plasi, si, si za itato, wangomnomyama, usopenefita. So pinda, pinda sibuya after twenty-three years, sipinda sikalesi, si, komdomyama, nomdomyama, otamulishaya olwaya, kengaya misabi. Sofyo yo wanginde, yanzeka, ekretwayo, uba, makwenzi wendoni, ndikela, uba, kungawika, ziglendo yo wangke. Abantu, mabaitringela, uba, NFDT, sa, indose, sa, basa, sa, uba, mabekon, yunete, pakati kwe shanga, longe, elipila, kuma sans Africa. Singa, kwa, sinaamkaj, humapa, kubasikete, pakati kubumyama, nabungsof, kubasifonisi, indose, yambe, nalende, lasifonasi, yambe, ay. Swa, ndikela, abantu, basa, was is South Africa, kuba, gushasongis, kubasisensai, masisas, NFDT, sorge, senga, abantu, malapims, hanzi, kap, 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 kala, yete, sipila, gusila, abu, en goed.
En goed. Je tijd start nu, zeg.
En goed. Mijn naam is Nazee Moses. Ik ben geboren in Beaufort West. En ik ben voor de amendement van de beeld. Voor de kernwaarde is, nee, deze RDP huizen, die de regering gebouwd heeft voor ons, hebben zelfs een yacht, waar ik een andere ruimte kunnen bouwen als jongeman, die een huis owns. De regering of de huidige beeld toegankt zelfs niet ons om voedsel te groeien in onze yacht. Hoe gaan we tot het punt komen waar we huizen worden? Je ziet, ongeacht dat we de educatieve kennis hebben, de amendement van de beeld of de amendement van de beeld dat niet is amendt, is ons te dragen als gemeenschap om te groeien. Dat is alles wat ik wil zeggen. En het andere is, voordat ik ga, wanneer we het willen amenden, nee, we moeten ook beginnen met het naam van South Africa. Zodat we als South Africans kunnen hebben het waarde die wordt weggegeven door de appartementssysteem. Het waarde moet worden geplanteerd terug in ons. En het is alleen door de amendement van de beeld. Dank je, heel veel.
Dank je, zeg.
Goedemorgen, ik ben meneer Daniel Sanresampal. Hij komt ook van de plas af. So, ik wil ook he, os wirdasopdiefka, die, gron werd van vijfen twentig met osasopdief, af, os wird afka. Want eh, die, die, die aarde, zal ik maar zeggen, die hele aarde is aan ons gebeloven. Wat het gesaid is, dat is een belovde land wat jullie in is, so. Ik weet niet wie het omgedeel, ons zoekt nu iemand wat die land gekomt deel heeft. Prijzen heren, os wil, daarien zoekt ons nou verdaag. En daar is nog een werk krijg bij, die kan doen, een werk krijg bij, zo doen. Maar wie heeft die land gekomt deel? Wie heeft hem gekomt deel? Ons zoekt nu onder elkaar nu die voet en die voet en die voet. Daar is iemand wat die land gekomt deel heeft. En elkere en, ze gron, wat gron had het weggeneemt van hem af. En de groepje heeft bij elkaar gekookt en helle, hier, waar daar die bezigheid. En hier zit ons nu, ons zit te kijken nu, ons zit te kijken nu toe. Wat gebeurde? Ik heb deze man, een pan, niks. Ik heb niemand rondom mij, nee, als ik die gronje kon gekrijgen, prijzen heren, dan had ik iets werk daarvan kon maken. Maar ik kan nu niks doen, ik is afgekap, mijn hand is afgekap. Die eerste man wat ingekomen, heeft geprobeerd om alles op de raab, so, so, soze mens kan, eh, dingen zo vast en zo draa, mekaar, zo opteld, prijzen heren. Ik wil net graag he, daarien weet, moet ons stop. Ons kan niet anders, ons moet hem stop. Ons moet hem stoppen, dat mag laten ons niks eten. En ons zal niemand ook niks eten. Maar iemand is verantwoordelijk voor die gron. Amen, dat is al wat ik wil zeggen.
All right, dan. Zeg.
Dank je, dank je allemaal. Mijn naam is Salmon Moses. Ik ben geboren en bred hier in Beaufort West. Ik ben voor de amendement van section twenty-five. Wij, why am I for the amendment of section twenty-five? Ik ben voor de amendement of section twenty-five omdat land is een van de belangrijkste eh, production factors. Factors of productie. Je ziet, zonder land kunnen we niks doen. We als, als, als Black people in Beaufort West proberen ons best te doen. Maar alleen omdat we geen land hebben, land, kunnen we absoluut niks doen. Wanneer ik over land sprake, ik bedoel dat net de andere dag, ik ging naar de gemeente. Eh, en ik vroeg hen over een stuk land waar ik cement, cement product, eh, producten kan produceren. En wat ze me zeiden, is loveable. De prijs, de, de vraagprijs voor de land is, ze zeggen ons, just, just try somewhere else, not here. Nu, als we land kunnen krijgen, kunnen we wat doen. Ik ben een brichtmaker, ik, ik ben een bouwer, ik ben een brichtmaker. Ik denk, ik denk, met de kennis en kennis die ik heb, kan ik, ik kan wel eh, 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 veel beter, als ik land heb. Ik ben geen huizen, ik support die die willen huizen, maar ik en anderen, we kunnen dat land ontwikkelen, om iets anders te worden. En dat is alles wat ik wil zeggen, dank je.
Dank je heel veel, zeg. Yebobut.
Eh, dank je heel veel. Mijn naam is Wellington Hugo. Ik ben uit Marisberg, in de Zuiden Cape. Eh, ik denk, mijn, ik ben voor de section twenty-five, must be amended. Eh, de reden waarom ik zeg, ik wil een submission maken vandaag, is omdat ik denk, historie heeft ons veel keer gezegd dat eh, landdisposizione was het meest brutal schuld dat er in South Africa kon gebeuren. De reden is omdat onze mensen nog steeds landloos zijn in South Africa. En dat is nu, ik denk, als we, je hoor de publiek, de meeste mensen zeggen dat section twenty-five moet worden amendt. Ik denk dat het heel duidelijk is. We won't tolerate het probleem dat mensen komen en intermediten ons. We hebben section thirty-nine van de constitution. Waar ze zeggen dat we moeten bekijken internationale, internationale wet. Waar ze zeggen dat we ook moeten bekijken het probleem van eh, die conventions enzovoort. Ik denk van die pessimisten en constitutionalisten en imperialisten, we moeten het heel duidelijk zijn. Ja. We als South Africans willen land hebben. Of we het gaan testen in het according to law, in het judicial, we moeten het heel duidelijk zijn. Onze mensen zijn disposoost. En als de mensen, zoals ze zeggen, ze waren disposoost. Dus moeten we ook voorbereiden dat, we, we zeggen dat, we zien dat mensen intermediten ons, ze zeggen dat ze zullen blashaden enzovoort. Maar we zijn niet om te zeggen dat, in, in, prior nineteen ninety-four, ze hebben ook gezegd dat. Dat is waar we zeggen hier. De mensen die achter section thirty-nine van de constitution houden, we moeten het heel duidelijk zijn. We als South Africans, we zijn hier om de sovereignty van ons land te defensie. We moeten het heel duidelijk zijn op dat. We moeten onze sovereignty defensie. We won't be told by andere landen, omdat expropriëren niet in South Africa plaatsvonden. In veel delen van de wereld, expropriëren plaatsvonden. Waar is het probleem wanneer het komt in South Africa vandaag? En dat is waar we zeggen dat die 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 achter section thirty-nine van de constitution houden, we hebben het heel duidelijk. Het andere submission dat ik wil maken. Als ze het niet geloven dat we zeggen dat expropriëren niet plaatsvinden. We kunnen zelfs een referendum hebben. Zoals we gaan in de twintig negentig generale elektroden. Laten we ook een referendum hebben om ze te bewijzen dat de land gaat teruggeven aan de mensen who right, who, eh, who belong, the land who, in feil, who belong to the, those who are landless. Dat is waar het submission dat ik wil maken, dat. Please, die 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 achter section, 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 section forty-nine, we hebben het heel duidelijk. Section twenty-five moet worden geänderd. En we zeggen, we willen land zonder compensatie. Dank je heel veel.
Dank je, zeg. Je drie minuten start nu.
Goedemorgen, ja, 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 Scorp. Ik ben Johannes Caesar. Ik ben echt langer geboren hier in, geweest, nee, maar ik is een Zuid-Afrikaan. Eerstens, is demstanda met de rai, sixteen, eh, vijfen twentig moet verantwoorden. Waar je beslis. Maar ik kan niet deal met skillings niet, omdat skillings wordt niet terugh. Maar ik kan ook niet zeggen dat die skillen gered begint bij negentien, twaaldertig. Want die mensen wat moet angegeerd voor die gemors, waar in onze land zit. Als die Britten, die Europeen, die Hollanders, helle allemaal, helle moeten ook die voet staan, improve, ango, ge, go. Sorry ze voor ons, die gemors wat levoersen geladen, en dan moeten we elkaar staan anteken. Want helle met onze, onze vrouwen, en onze mensen, van die, van die aan hier, hier erige blijen. Het lokomhoereen, en weggaan, maar onze eigen mensen kunnen niet. Als die, als die vrouwen in zijn, in zijn, in zijn trui, waar je wer was, was, in zijn spreken gemaakt, die rij Europese, hij was net in vorige historie geweest. Maar hij kent het, en dat is waar ons nou is. So, ik is de most eerlijkste speaker, die maai begraap, waar je graag de volgende ding zeg. Credie, skillings, het, beter lekker naeving plannen, goedes met elkaar geheen, en gedanken, hier is helle beloofde land. Die land van Melken yene, was het verhalen geweest, die Europese. En toen het hindeur gebringt, en gedanken, helle gaan nou, te maken, helle planen, met elkaar, helle fre, willen ander, ander staan, en helle, en helle lekkere lippen af, hun ogen is daagbleng, want hier is nou, net mooi hella afwippoint, waar je wil ook lukt, ander bezig gemaakt, en, en met geslaven, trekt goed, andere gaat het, en, en ons hier in onze land, ik wil proberen, toe gesegregateerd. En toen komen helle met de klomsslingsse woorden om hij planen kiest, en hij wil kies, van helle, en je rol te krijgen. Die voor onze mensen te komen leer woorden zoals, wat ons noemen niet zeker, kaffer, hotnot, wat éber de woorden is, dat helle gebringen het naar ons, dat helle voor ons, voor helle leer. En nou brengen helle die nieuwe woorden van democratie goedes, brengen helle naar ons. Want ons is die rules, van ken, hoe, weg uit democratie woord, brengen helle naar ons, en dan moet ons komen, en helle toelaten wat ons de gusheid in onze land. Ik zeg, ons, die gron moet terugkomen naar de rechtmatige eindgangstoel, en wat is negotiation is die story. So, maar ik is ook een regerende persoon, want ons het kaltes gaat. Onze, onze, als daar welzo mensen uitgesit was vanaf, het ons kaltes gaat. Onze, onze sofaya taans, en onze tisseresse, waar evenk, ons het, onze eigen kaltes het dus gaat. Zo helle kom voor eens te leren dat, wat zwart is, wat evenk, daar is dom, onnozel, ik kan niet, onze eigen gron bewegen, en het voor eens kom kreeg, bezig om ons zelf, onze eigen goedesten maai. Zo ons kan het doen, ons is geleerde mensen, en ons weet hoe moeten gaan doen. Zo moet niet voor ons komen, komen zeggen, en voor ons komen bang maken, ons gaan, ons zelf, in de voet skiet op, wat éber het ook helle zeg. So, en, en closing, helle net graag zeg. Als het blijft, hij gaat zo lang, nou al in mijn time gaat hij zo lang mijn gronje uitkikken, en met, en met tentpinnen, zo wat helle gemaakt, daikik, daar helle kom tentpinnen, op, helle, helle hooppinnen kom afstikken, hij gaat zo lang mijn hooppinnen beginnen afstikken, in de GPS code, in de code.
Ik denk je niet op, oh, nee, je deed het zo sterk.
Dank je.
Goedemorgen, meneer.
Oké.
Ja, wap, die mensen zelf. Maar die gron hie ze, mij verstaan het. Maar mijn eindelijkse dan, wat ik hier voorgekomen, als het lief en dankje. Maar ik heb dat brief gekregen van, 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 van die groot mensen. En lovelijk maar net, laten helle van mij nek aan verdijt, ik wou er garnet, en wat moet ik maken? Dat is van wat ik hier voorgekomen, als het lief en dankje.
All right, dan. Yes, zeg.
Blijf je, allemaal. Eh, mijn naam is Louvuyongondo, geboren in eh, Central Karun, Beaufort West. Ik ben ook eh, ik ben aan de kleine huizen ook. Eh, ik zou het misschien zeggen, eh, ik ben aan de, de onbekende huizen. Omdat het zo rituelo is dat eh, we zijn zestig vier memoren in een, in een kleine huizen, in een, in een eh, 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 kleine delen van land die we moeten werken. Zestig vier families, whereby daar is iemand daar buiten die heeft zestig vier huizen. En toch is hij zelfs niet in die huizen. Hij is, hij is daar buiten, en geniet van zichzelf. Nu sta ik met de amendement van, van de section eh, 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 twenty-five. Omdat eh, als ik zei, ons sava onnurach. Toch konden dingen worden korrekt. En eh, ik moet zeggen, ik dank God dat er een omgeving is. Dat politieke partijen nu staan op. Ze, ze beginnen te strijden voor de juiste dingen. Ze, ze starten te aankennen dat ze moeten staan voor de recht van hun burgers, van hun mensen. En eh, ik denk als de, de, de witte minoriteit wil laten zien remors, ze moeten een deel van deze democratie zijn. Ze, ze moeten komen en laten zien dat oké, dit is niet net wat ons geervetting ma. Ons is wat jammer, wat wat gedone was. No, no, ons wel uksamstam en samwerk, want ons zo deal van die democratie. Maar, maar als, w- 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 er zijn meetings zoals dit, en ze, ze starten, ze starten op en uit, eh, 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 laten zien geen respect, dan dat betekent dat echt, de persoon die hier staan zegt dat we starten te defensie our, 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 our ground, dan, dan, het, het zal komen tot ons. En, en ik ben bang, ik ben bang. Omdat ik, ik, ik zou niet willen dat deze land lijkt als een andere disadvantaged land.
Dank je, zeg. Dank je.
Dank je, mister Chair. Mijn naam is David, eh, ik was ook voor de Beaufort West. En was rais in Beaufort West. En ik zou ook graag de verandering van de eh, van de act, eh, amendement van de eh, van de act, en eh, alleen om erop te elaboreren, we hebben met stabiel mensen hier. We hebben met mensen die niet remorsbaar zijn. En we hebben met mensen die ademont. We hebben met mensen die zeker weten hoe ze de land claimen. En daarnaast ze kwamen met de constitution, en ze manipulerden de constitution. Dus sta ik te zeggen dat de regering het recht heeft om hetzelfde te doen. Manipuleren het systeem, run het systeem. Doe exact wat ze deden, simpel als dat. Claimen de land, dat niet bij hen belongs, mensen zijn dood voor de land. Kijk naar de flaggen van eh, alle Afrikanen landen. Er is altijd rood, er is altijd ziel, er is altijd groen. En alle die kleuren, ze zijn significant voor de blashaden en de mineralen van deze zoi. En de groen van deze land, van deze continent. Dus ik denk dat voor ons te zijn piti, eh, te zijn pitiel en allemaal being sensitive over dit probleem, het is, het is, we don't have to, we don't have to. En we waren boodwenn we deden dit, laten we ook bood in dit, simpel als dat. Dank je, zeg.
All right, dank je, zeg.
Ah, Chairperson. Mijn naam is, mijn naam is Eli Jackson Berg. Ik ben voor de amendement van section twenty-five van de constitution. Ik, ik sta hier als de bornaar van Beaufort West. Ik sta hier als de zoon van een vader die een van de eerste kleine huizen was van de stad. Je ruimt dus, ja, ik bedoel, ze werden niet toegankelijk voor meer dan trikhuizen. Dus dat is waar ik uitkom. Maar nogmaals, ik, ik sta hier, ik ben voor de verandering omdat, nummer één, we kunnen because number one, we can't even buy residential property here. Also commercial. Now, I heard this morning that there was somebody here, was, you know, you know, attacking the government law of corruption. Now, I want to raise two critical points here. In Beaufort West, we have an, we have an airport here, which was sold for hundred and thirty thousand renz to a white lady. Months after, the Chinese came and established a flying school here. Now, Chinese wanted to buy it from her for about fifty million renz. Now, my question is, how does, how does the municipality sell an asset of the town? An airport is like one of your key points, you know? And they sold it for hundred and thirty thousand renz. Months after, a school is established here. That is one point. Secondly, there were some people who are accusing government of being corrupt. A guy is a municipal manager. He leaves the municipality. Months after, he gets land, he developed it, he sells properties. Number three, I want to come back home. I'm applying for land, because I said, no, I want to buy land and build a house here. Because this is my hometown, at some point, I want to come back home and retire here. I can't get that land. Whereas, and a veteran person became a DA councillor. When they were discussing my application, it was one of the person who was against it. Asked me, I mean, where am I going to get the money to, to buy the land? Now, to me, that's corruption because he's a developer. So now he knows.
Your time has expired, sir.
And I would like to.
Yeah, it's expired.
Paja dankje speaker, ik is lakkay van wijk van Merewell. Ik wil net eerst eens zeggen, ik steem samen met artikel 25, met, met, met sondervergoeding. De reden hoe kom ik zo zeg is en Merewell is daar 25 wat hij is aan je naast. Je een deze kleerland hij is aan je naast. Vijftaak plaatsen. Daar heeft, daar is net tien boeren wat hij is aan je naast. Maar vijftaak plaatsen heeft. Nou ons kleerlange wat werk op die plaatsen wat het deze hij is aan je naast is. Hij hebt niet één plaats daarzo niet. Dat is hier reden hoe kom ik zeg, ik steem samen met sondervergoeding om af te vatten. Ik is geboren met grondte, om grondte voer te bereiden, om op die tafel te zitten. Ik heb niet grond niet. Daar is waar je grond op die plaatsen, waar je boeren is hier op die plaatsen niet. Oors met die plaatsen bewerkt. En wat nummer twee is, ik laat niet voor mij, laat maar deel van, ons kan niet die plaatsen regieren of, of laat, laat boeren. Want ons boer al het tijd op die plaatsen en alle is niet daan niet. Dat is reden hoe kom ik zeg, pachans om een eerste op Merewell met grondvergoeding, sondervergoeding. Paja dankje speaker.
Aye, thank you, meneer.
Alles wat die abouli saa, kus klab, saa ngafanbi true way, na chairman. Ik okaala die funu kuthe, ja, ik support daar artikel 25, paama kamen. Amen. Die soiiga boodwa. Ngoba, de processa ikali ngoba. Ikala isu angona in die foom. Khulmeende okoyo waena yo imandeet, je truth head, wezen doet. Ken ik kala die funu bule lii FF, hiyo ehie yaba nyatela eswane. Luwa ma vasukum naamchand, vasukua vasiso uteta apa naani nize apa kuti. Diya temba kele process le, leento isa kuenseka. Singa jogindo ba ingu, twenty nineteen kunyagoza ngoba. Dienda kuala se la, ka kusol, ka kupeli five years, disloko nisiza, neleke sesi minanti. Nisipisa kamdaanti, ehie ayayayi, vaswani geni very chance. Lumke laani ken, twenty nineteen kunyagoza. Dietera nu khulmeende getruwe na chairman. EFF vasukum isse eni pa, imishini eni yasedenza. Yasedenza imishini eni nu, EFF. Since na fi kanina klapala meende kulalua ngopa. Nava mama, nava tata, vashele pa. Wat je kuwa? Wa jongi? Wa buto awlala je, atuwa leva ye ye buka? Abnope ya mahala ni, nekshukum, so EFF shalani pez kuwa. En goos.
Chairman. And goos, Bob.
Thank you, Chairperson. Let me start by thanking all of you for attending this public hearing and for your contributions, which are very much valued by this committee. And I hope that they will be taken into very serious consideration. And we also urge you to follow the workings of this committee so that you are also informed as to how far this committee is going. On Saturday, we shall be in Goodwood. Therefore, we appeal to some of you who will be able to attend to come. And we would also like to thank all those who made arrangements for this venue, the parliamentary staff, parliamentary protection services, and all members from different political parties for their attendance. We thank you so much and we value once more your contributions and your attendance. Thank you and go well.